Okay, I believe everybody's here. I can see everybody. So at this time, I will call order the May 12 meeting of the Carmel by the Sea Planning Commission. Like to welcome everybody. We have roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
You know, Margie, I just saw her. And I think maybe she was going to just log right back in because it looked like she was logged in with Dave Stoltz account. So perhaps it's logging right back in. I did just see her.
Okay, Commissioner Dell's. He said he might be late.
Yeah, I don't think he's here. Here.
And Chair LePage.
Here. Okay, we we still have a quorum, so we'll proceed. This time we will have extraordinary business. I believe Director Swanson has something he'd like to announce.
Thank you, Chair LePage. Yes, I have a few items under extraordinary business. The first one, if you notice, when Marnie turns on her camera, when Catherine turns on her camera, there's going to be some decorations in the room. And the reason is that today we're celebrating, today is actually Catherine's last day with the city of Carmel by the Sea. Catherine is moving on to see what other adventures are out there in the world professionally, and we wish her the absolute best. We're very sad to see her go. She's been a wonderful part of our team. But we are wishing her adieu today. Today is actually her last day in the office. She's going to end her career here at the city of Carmel by the Sea with the planning commission. So that's the first item I wanted to announce to you all, so that when she gets to her item, you can make comments to that effect if you'd like. The second announcement is more technical in nature. A couple of changes tonight you may see in your resolutions and your staff reports. I wanted to just give you some background on it, and of course, we can have a discussion on it. Two of them are technical with respect, one to CEQA and one to the coastal development permit. So not to go too much down a CEQA nerd rabbit hole because I could go there for quite a while. But in general, CEQA requires review by a discretionary body like the planning commission and making a CEQA determination on things that are quote unquote projects. And a project in CEQA is defined as something that will have a direct or indirect impact on the environment. So what we have been doing is our resolutions for these concept designs where you're not approving a project. Nothing is being approved, no entitlements are being granted, nothing is being built from that. What we have been doing in our resolutions and our staff reports is doing the CEQA exemption, like 15301 or 15303 for new construction or minor additions. That's actually not the correct CEQA approach. For these concept designs where we're not approving anything, it should be considered not a project, which is another category under CEQA. So that's a change you're going to see for the ones in the concept design. You're not, as the planning commission discretionary hearing body, you're not taking a CEQA action tonight. It is not a project under CEQA because you're not approving a project. So that's just on the concept plant designs. That's going to be a change. In the same vein, we had been in the past including the coastal development permit as part of the concept designs, which is also inappropriate because you are not approving any sort of permits or anything like that as part of the concept design. So the coastal development permit, which is simply an add-on to be consistent with our local coastal program, is not really appropriate to include the coastal, is part of the concept design. Both the coastal development permit and the CEQA determination will come on the final concept or final design review. So those are two changes that I wanted to make the planning commission aware of, and I can answer any of those questions if you want. I'm thinking sometime in the next month or two of doing just a short CEQA presentation for the planning commission. Nothing too geeky, but just to talk a little bit about it and answer some questions. But those two changes I made because technically we were doing things not in accordance with CEQA and the coastal development plan process. And the third thing that I want to mention is something that actually I do hope we can generate some conversation with the planning commission on. One of our standard conditions, condition number eight, has been written in such a way in previous times that I think it was perhaps written in a black and white way that wasn't intended by, certainly not intended by staff and probably not by the planning commission, but it's up to you as the discretionary decision makers. We have made changes to condition number eight, standard condition number eight on the projects that are final tonight. So that would be Yonah Curra, Turner, Rainey, and Black. If you look at standard condition number eight on all of those, and we could talk about it during the projects, if you'd like to amend the condition the way staff has written it. The way the condition was previously written was that effectively any changes at all to a project during construction. So if you were to move a light fixture one foot to the left from what was shown on the plans, anything at all was an immediate stop work order, and essentially you have to come back to the hearing body, so the planning commission, for a decision on that change. What staff has done is has made some minor modifications to that condition so that it reads to you. So that it reads that the applicant shall submit in writing to the community planning and building staff any proposed changes to the project plans prior to incorporated changes if the applicant substantively changes the project beyond general conformance with the approved plans. And so that's the important part that staff has changed is that now it's not, now it's not every single change, you know, moving a light fixture to the left or right. It's substantive changes that are beyond general conformance. And general conformance is a term that in planning and building is used pretty commonly. General conformance, meaning that there was always a light fixture plan somewhere, there was always a door plan somewhere. It's just shifted slight movements. General conformance is not putting in a whole deck where there wasn't a deck before, or a patio where there wasn't a patio before, changing a roofing material. Those are not general conformance with approved plans. So there is a line there. It's a little bit nebulous. And so that's why I would like some input from the planning commission. If you're comfortable with that level of detail being in there, one suggestion that I would make perhaps even to our own language that proposing is adding a line in there about or potential impacts to neighbor privacy. I think that that's an important thing here. If we see changes, while they may be minor in nature, if they have some sort of impact on neighbor privacy, it may be worth doing a stop work order and bringing it back to the commission. So I'd like to have that conversation with the commission tonight. And Mr. Chair, I will leave that to you if you would like to do that here during extraordinary business or do it as part of the first item that has that special condition, which is number two on the agenda tonight, Yonah Curra. And that would be the same condition for those other three that I mentioned. So I'll leave it to your discretion, Mr. Chair, if you'd like to have that conversation with the planning commission right now as part of extraordinary business or do it as part of the project itself.
I think we will do that with the public hearing, the first item where it occurs in the public hearings.
Okay, thank you.
So we can move along and then we'll use the public hearings to have that discussion. Okay, is that all the extraordinary business or announcements you wanted to make?
Yes, thank you for indulging me. I know that was longer than normal, so I appreciate it.
Okay. At this time, we're going to move on to the public appearances. Member of the public are entitled to speak to the planning commission on matters of municipal concern which are not on our agenda tonight. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to the planning commission about any matter which is not on our agenda tonight? I think Michael, excuse my pronunciation, mispronounced your name, Mr. Raffa Tony? Did I get that right?
Raffetto, Raffetto.
I couldn't, I couldn't say that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, before Mr. Raffetto begins, would you like to have a timer again tonight for?
Yes, that's right. The, I want to announce that the comments will be limited to three minutes.
Three minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll be as quick as I can. Thank you, Chair LePage. Members of the commission, thank you for your time. Whoops, I'm only, oh, there you are. Right, I'm sorry. So I spoke to you on April 14th, and unfortunately, I'm here again this evening to talk about two additional issues. And certainly one is, and by reference, we'll be talking about it later, and I would like to comment on it when we do on Yokamura. But it is conditions of approval number eight. And you have written correspondence from my wife Nora and I that's a part of your packet for this evening's agenda, and I hope you had time to read that. The second issue, new issue that we've included is a lower level door system that was installed that in the original approved plans had the operable unit of these doors 16 feet away from the corner of our house. And the contractors, they have now been installed at the corner of our house. In other words, they've been installed backwards. The operable unit, which was 16 feet away in the approved plans from December 19, is now at the corner of our house, feet from our balcony, and just below our glass sunroom. You know, so, you know, we stand here and we just scratch our heads wondering whether we made a mistake subscribing to track one and believing that the enforcement of the approved plans from December 2019 would be enforced. We believed that they would as vigorously as a set of plans that had come through track two, that is, that had come before the planning commission. And we sit here and, you know, we look at, I look at a project, I look at the the, no, the Yokamura project, and you're going to talk about it in just a few minutes. And I look at the great work that staff has done on that. I look at the discussion that you had about it on April 14th and all of the issues and sensitivities that you discussed and the reaction that your staff put into the report for this evening's meeting. And I think about Ms. Williams, the neighbor to the north, and her concerns about light and the staff's reaction to windows and obscure glass and sunlight onto our patio. And I think I want to be Ms. Williams. Think of us as Ms. Williams and think of our issues as sunlight issues and window issues. Imagine if Ms. Williams came back a year and a half later and said, you know what? They didn't move the second story. The glass is clear, the windows are larger, and the roof is out at the fence line. How would you react to that? We're asking you to react that way on our behalf. This issue is coming to you. The, I know my time is up, 15 seconds and I'll step away. This issue is coming back to you. The contractor architect is going to ask for forgiveness and approval for all of these violations. Thank you so much, and certainly we will see you in a month. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the planning commission on matters which are not on our agenda tonight? I'm scrolling down, taking a look here. I don't see anybody.
I don't see any Mr. Chair, and if someone raises their hand, they'll shoot to the top of your.
Yeah, okay, so they'll go to the top. I don't have to scroll down.
That's correct, yeah. And so if someone, if it's all right with you, just to let everyone know, if you, if you're participating tonight, obviously, we're doing Zoom. If you're participating tonight on the computer on your Zoom platform, if you use your mouse and move to the bottom of the screen, on the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see mute and unmute. That's how you would mute and unmute yourself in order to be able to speak as part of the meeting if you're on your computer. And if you see along the bottom there as well, there's a smiley face that says reactions. If you open that, there's an option to raise your hand. That's how you can let the chair know that you'd like to participate. That's again, if you're on your computer. If you're calling in tonight from a mobile phone or landline, then you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. That's star nine to raise your hand via phone. And star six will unmute your device if you're on a phone. So just so everyone's aware how the functionality works remotely, and it sounds like somebody maybe is unmuting themselves now.
So do we have somebody who would like to speak to the planning commission during public appearances? I don't see them. There's nobody at the top of the list. Okay, we're going to move on to announcements. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Catherine for her service to the city and specifically the planning department. She's always been very competent in her reports, and she's always been a pleasure to work with. I just personally want to wish her the best of luck in whatever endeavor that she takes on in the future. And I know she will be extremely well qualified, whatever that may be. So thank you very much, Catherine. We're all going to miss you, I'm sure. Is there anyone else from planning commissioners that want to say anything to Catherine at this time?
I think I missed something.
Missed something?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I had some technical difficulties.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Commissioner Locke has joined us as well as Commissioner Dell, so.
So Catherine, Catherine is no longer going to.
Oh, you missed, yeah, yeah. Catherine, this is going to be her last day with the planning department.
Oh.
And we're just wishing her all the best, and I'm sure all the planning commissioners feel the same as I do. So thank you very much, Catherine. Okay. No further announcements. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda tonight. We have the minutes of our April 14th regular meeting. We have the minutes of the regular planning commission, April 28. Well, that was our special meeting. That was a special meeting on April 28th. And then we have the community and planning and building monthly permit report. These items are typically acted upon when motion unless someone from either the public or one of the commissioners wants an item pulled for further discussion. Does anyone from the commission or the public request any of these items be pulled for further discussion? Okay, I haven't seen anybody with their head up, and the commissioners are shaking their heads no. So in that case, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented by staff.
I'll make that motion.
I second that.
Okay, motion has been made in second to accept the consent agenda in its totality. Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dell?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LePage?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our public hearing tonight, on the agenda tonight are the public hearings. Before we get started, I just want to say that comments should be listed. The public's comments and follow-up comments should be listed to three minutes. The applicant shall have five minutes for their presentation, and they can have a three-minute rebuttal time. The first item on the agenda has been continued to a date uncertain, so we will begin with item number five, which is consideration of a five-year renewable expansion to a coastal development permit for invasive species and removal and maintenance activities in the Mission Trails Nature Preserve. We have the staff report, please.
Good afternoon, Chair LePage and commissioners. I'm Anyas Martoyan with the Public Works Department, Environmental Compliance Manager. So let me share my screen real quick. And you see the presentation?
Yes, we've got it. Thank you, Anyas.
Okay. All right, great. So I am here today to present a project status update and CDP renewal request for the Mission Trail Nature Preserve. A little bit of background on the preserve and the project. The Mission Trail Nature Preserve was established as a natural parkland for passive recreation in 1979 by city council. It is designated as an environmentally sensitive habitat area. It has a master plan, which was adopted in 1996 and was incorporated in the local coastal program in 2004. There was a baseline biological assessment that was completed in 2016. And in connection with that, a renewable five-year coastal development permit was approved by the planning commission for the following activities, including road clearance, hazardous tree removal, mowing, trail maintenance, and regular maintenance activities, and implementation of the habitat restoration actions that were recommended in the baseline biological assessment. And on the right of your screen, you've got a map of the preserve with south is on the bottom of the map and the north is at the top. You have the main entrance to the preserve is on the south side at Rio Road. There are several entrances to the preserve. The mountain view entrance to the preserve is at the very north end of the preserve. Sarah Trail connects the two entrance, the two main entrances along the entire length of the preserve. In the middle, in light green, you have the Martin Meadow, which is near the Martin access, Martin Street access, kind of in the north central part of the preserve, as the finders mentioned. So just to give you a little bit of organization around the preserve area. So our progress to date, we've done quite a bit of work, and a lot of this was done in partnership with the Friends of Mission Trail Nature Preserve. I can't emphasize enough how much their support has meant for the preserve and for our projects and for getting things done. So activities that have been done include removal of invasive trees, removal of invasive brush, ivy, and fire fuel, trail maintenance, mowing of the Martin Meadow, which is an annual activity, installation of trail signage, installation of dual trash recycling containers, and a stream stability study. And I'll go into a little bit more details about all of these. So starting with tree removals, we have removed nearly all of the invasive eucalyptus trees in the preserve and quite a few invasive acacia trees as well. That's over 100 trees. If you look at the photo on the left, that is a photo of the view from Flanders Mansion before the eucalyptus trees were removed. And then you can see the same view on the right without the eucalyptus. It's quite a change. There's another view, I believe this one more from Martin Meadow. And you can see again in the middle, those very large eucalyptus trees on the left side, which are gone on the right. And actually, you can even see on the left in quite a bit smaller, but still, they're decent sized trees. You can see acacia trees as well that are gone on the right. So a lot of tree removal has been completed. The Friends have done a tremendous amount of work towards brush, ivy, and fire fuel removal. This is a map, this map is a plot map that they created to sort of break up the preserve and into manageable plots for fire fuel and ivy removal. And pretty much most of the northern part of the preserve has been cleared of fire fuels and ivy, as well as several spots around the Flanders Mansion and then several spots on the east side of the preserve. So quite a bit of that work, quite a bit of work done there, too. Here's some photos of fire fuel and ivy removal. Lots of piles of brush. So this work is done partly with volunteers, partly with grants that the Friends are able to get to do this work. And the Public Works support this work by removing all the piles that are aggregated onsite. These are photos of the after, after removal. So you can see on the left side here is the area known as the Loyola Redwood Grove. That used to be totally overgrown with ivy, including the trees. And now you can actually see the trees and the tree trunks, which were completely covered in ivy before. And on the right is more of oak woodland habitat that has also been cleared of ivy, and you can see the forest floor is quite a bit more open. A lot of work has been done on trail repair and maintenance as well. So here you have photos, before, before photos of some of the issues that we had at Mission Trail. We had erosion from off-trail uses, including bike, off-trail bikes, off-trail hikers, and, you know, dogs. And usually, some of these off-trail uses are exacerbated, the erosion is exacerbated by runoff in the winter as well. So there's been quite a bit of maintenance activities to repair some of these issues, including mulching, erosion mitigation, split rail fencing installation, and trail repairs. And we'll show some photos of that. So here's some photos of our erosion control activities, including installation of jute netting here on the left where we have ruts from off-trail activities. And the jute netting is there to keep the soil in place and allow vegetation to start growing back. And on the right here, you have a photo that shows where split rail fencing has been installed so that people can no longer cut across those slopes. And actually, you can kind of see on the slope there the jute netting that is left, but then the vegetation is starting to come through, and soon you won't even know that this was a rut area. Here are more photos of split rail fencing installations to help reduce off-trail erosion, and they've been quite successful at helping to restore those areas. This is, so there's been quite a bit of trail repair and trail maintenance work around Dulittle Trail, which had a lot of erosion. And this, these photos here show the end of Dulittle Trail where it connects with Sarah Trail in the middle of the preserve. And the end of the trail used to be real kind of difficult to get through, a little steep. The concrete there at the Ford was very steep, and this was not a good situation. So the Friends worked with the city to remove the stairs in front of that little pump house there, create a little trail along the side of the Ford so that people can now cross the Ford in an area that's much flatter and much easier and safer. More trail maintenance. This is Sarah Trail where it crosses through the willow habitat. Willows grow very fast and so they need to be pruned back in order for us to continue to have vehicular access so that we can continue our maintenance work, including removing piles, you know, removing branches, broken branches during the winter, removing that trees and that kind of, those kinds of activities. So we worked with the Friends again on this, on this project to help to prune the willows so that we have much better, more open access. Trail signage was also installed throughout the preserve to help guide people along the various trails. And with a grant from Cal Recycle, we replaced several of the squirrel cans that were in the park with dual trash recycling containers, which provide larger capacity for garbage and also allow the ability for people to recycle when they're at the park. An annual activity is the mowing of Martin Meadow. We do this either early in the season, season in April, April, May, or late in the season in August so that we avoid impacting Hickman's Onion, which is a special status species. And this is the meadow when it was just mowed. We did it in, in May this year. Stream stability study. So we completed this work, this study in 2019. This was done because we have, the stream in Mission Trail has some significant erosion and undermining issues. And the study was done to design repairs for, for these erosion issues. So the study has come up with a plan and preliminary designs for eight projects that would help reduce these erosion impacts and help restore the natural hydrology in the preserve. Continuing projects, we have, we still have quite a bit of work to do in the preserve. We need to continue our fire, fire fuel and invasive plant removal. We actually applied for State Coastal Conservancy Grant for fire fuel removal to the west of Willow Trail and near Flanders Mansion. And it appears we have been approved for funding for $45,000 for work that we could start this summer. Also, we would like to restore the habitats, habitat areas that were cleared of invasive species. That photo on the right here is an area that was cleared of invasive acacias and eucalyptus. And we'd love, like to help restore willow habitat in this, in this area. We also have more acacia removal to do. There are still some large acacia trees in the middle of the preserve. There are, we also would like to implement the drainage improvements that were recommended in the stream stability study. And we are looking to apply for per capita grant for implementation of the first three of those eight projects in this stability study. And that's a non-competitive grant. So if we apply for it and we have all the, all the needed information, we should be able to get the funding. Finally, we also need to continue trail maintenance and annual maintenance activities in the preserve. These are some photos of areas that still need to be cleared of fire fuel and invasive brush. And so in conclusion, our staff is requiring a five-year extension to the previously approved CDP so that we may continue progress on our invasive vegetation removal to, to implement the recommendations of the stream stability study and to continue our annual maintenance activities. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Anya? Okay, hearing none. That was a very impressive report, Anya, and it's, it really illustrates all the work that's been done. It's, it's really quite, quite a labor and a labor of love, I must admit. Every, the volunteers and the Friends put the time in. Are there any comments from the public? See if I see anybody with their hand up here.
Someone named Catherine Hanson has her hand up.
Oh, there it is. Yes, Catherine Hanson, would you like to make some comments to the planning commission?
I would. Thank you very much.
Ask some questions?
Yes, I just would, just a public comment, actually. My name is Catherine. I live at 3069 Rio Road. And I've lived here with my son and our dog for almost three years. And one of the main reasons we moved here was because the amazing Mission Trail is right behind our house and our backyard opens up onto Willow Trail. And it, it was, again, such a selling point when I saw it. It's so beautiful. I feel like it's this hidden gem within the city that only locals know about and we enjoy it almost every single day. It is, I think, enjoyed by, it seems like dozens of people I see out there every day. My point that I want to make today is that on Willow Trail, there's a section that floods every year during the rainy season. Right now, fortunately, because of the drought, it's not flooded. But typically, it's flooded for quite a few months during the year. And that section of Willow Trail is closed off. And there are signs from the city, green and white signs from the city that say, "Trail closed." And it's flooded and it's swampy and it's a dark kind of oily color. So it doesn't just look like water, it looks like something else. And I would just ask that, because I, again, I've been here for three years almost and I've seen it every winter, I would ask that that be looked at and that there be maintenance done on that specific part of Willow Trail. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to make some comments on this project? I don't see. Yeah. Okay.
Yes, I would. My name is Cindy Lloyd. I was a member of the Board of Friends of Mission Trail Nature Preserve from its inception until about two years ago. And almost 30 years ago, when the meadow was threatened by the council at that time to be sold to women, other women, and I organized a group and we finally managed after over two years to make sure that the meadow was not sold in the park. So anyway, it's been an ongoing interest of mine. And my brother Skip Lloyd was the immediate past president of the Friends of Mission Trail Nature Preserve. Excuse me, I get a little choked up here. Anyway, he, he asked me if I was going to be speaking at this meeting and I said I certainly would. I just want to say how happy I am that the city has recognized the treasure we have in Mission Trail Nature Preserve and how supportive the city has now become in all the endeavors. It was delightful meeting Brandon and his wife Carolyn on Saturday during the Wheaties. We all worked together. And I was only sorry that Chipper couldn't be there, but he's been a supporter as well. So anyway, kudos to all of you for all the support and thanks very much.
And thanks to you, Cindy, for all your hard work. Does there anyone else who'd like to make some comments to the planning commission at this time?
Yeah, hi, Michael. This is Scott Lonergan. I'd like to make a comment.
Hi, Scott.
Apologies, I couldn't find the raise my hand button, so I'm just had to jump in. Yeah, thank you. I, I too wanted to echo some of those sentiments that Cindy just made. I, this is Scott Lonergan. I'm part of Friends of Mission Trail Nature Preserve. And I've been here five years in Carmel. And I would just say, it's just really amazing, impressive to me how much has happened in five years. And I definitely, and the city has really put a lot into it. I really appreciate the partnership with the Friends. And I just think it's incredible how much has happened in five years since the time I got here into what you see now. And a lot of that comes out in some of those photos you see. There's definitely more to do. But I think it's just well on the way. It's, it's a really nice compliment. We have this beautiful Carmo Cove and White Sand Beaches on one side. And then the, this nature preserve on the other side of us. And it's, you're doing, continuing this work is, you know, not just about the nice aesthetics of it, but it's also helps improve safety, reduces fire risk with having a native, a healthy native habitat is, helps keep fire risk down as opposed to having things like eucalyptus and genesta. It's very important for helping native species, insects, to the birds. You have all these, if you have a bunch of invasives, you lose, you lose that as well. So I just want to express my gratitude to the city and also strong support for extending this CDP. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks for all the work you do on this. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the planning commission? I don't see any hands up. Anybody want to jump in or? Don't see any hands up. Okay, I'll close the public's comments and bring it back to the commission. Let the commissioners make their comments. Commissioner Lehman, would you like to begin?
Sure. Thank you, Chair LePage. I want to congratulate Agnes for a wonderful job and a great presentation. I live very close to the Mission Trail and we walk it a lot. We love it. So it's wonderful to see how it has opened up with the trees that have been removed. And we really appreciate it. So thank you.
Commissioner Bolton, would you like to make some comments at this time?
Why not? I used to live on Atherton when I was a kid in the 80s. And I used to play in Mission Trail. And the change between then and now is really remarkable. And in fact, the change in the last five years is remarkable and the amount of work that's been put into it is tremendous. I'm very appreciative that the city of Carmel has sought to and followed through with the plans that they started in 96 when I was at UC Santa Cruz and coming to these meetings occasionally, trying to hear what the, what the plan was going to be. So I'm very pleased and I want to say I appreciate all the hard work and look forward to continuing the good work in Mission Trail.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Commissioner Locke, would you like to make some comments?
Sure. I echo all of the above and definitely appreciate the effort that Skip and Cindy have put into the Mission Trails Nature Preserve. In the last five years, I've also seen immense improvements, opening it up, getting rid of invasives. And I know Nikki Nediff has also been involved and Nikki and I worked together for a number of years. And I think that it's just, it's a fabulous treasure and I'm really happy that we can support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Dells, would you like to make some comments?
Nothing to add, other than thank you to everyone who's done this. And we should stop talking about it because we can all still find peace and quiet in there, even on a holiday Sunday. So we should, we should extend this thing for five more years.
Okay, well, having said that, would you like to make a motion to accept the resolution?
I do make a motion to approve the resolution that's in our package, packet extending the CDP for the Mission Trail, for the Mission Nature Preserve.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have, we have a motion to, and a second to accept the resolution as presented in our packet for the coastal development permit. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none? Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LePage?
Yes. Motion is carried. Okay, thank you. And I want to, once again, thank all the volunteers, the Friends. I mean, it's incredible the progress you're making. It's just a huge job and, but it just shows what concerted effort can do. Thank you so much. Okay, the next item on our public hearings tonight is item number six. This is a design study. It's the Yonakura Project. It's consideration of a final design study and associated coastal development permit for the demolition of an existing carport and a 719 square foot rear addition of an existing one-story, to an existing one-story resident and the construction of a 1,073 square foot two-story addition at the rear of the residence and a 240 square foot detached garage in the front setback of residence. So located on Mission, three southwest of 13. Can we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair LePage. Let's see.
Oh, you know, before you get started, Catherine, well, well, the director requested that we have some discussion about the
Mr. Chair, I would suggest.
When we hold that, when I do that, we'll do that at the end of the
That's what I would suggest.
When they do, yeah. Okay, all right, I just want to make sure I covered that in the correct manner. All right, Catherine, please go ahead. Sorry for the interruption.
Sure, thank you. One moment. Okay, let's see. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. So this is, you read this project description. So basically, the, the residence is a board and batten, existing, single-story residence with a wood shake roof and mostly aluminum casement windows. Again, the, the rear 719 square foot portion of the residence is proposed to be demolished. And, and a 1,700, I'm sorry, 1,073 square foot addition will be constructed at the rear. And it will be two-story. And a 240 square foot detached garage will replace the existing 400 square foot carport. At the April 14th Planning Commission meeting, the commission accepted the concept design study with specific recommendations. The first recommendation was that the north-facing second-story windows be, be made obscure. So this has been completed. They are the, the two windows indicated by the red arrows. And the, the north neighbor has stated in her letter that her concerns about the windows have been resolved and the stair, the window at the staircase was reduced in size. In regard to the north fence, the second, the commission's second recommendation was that the existing seven to seven and a half foot tall north, let's see, fence along the north property line be replaced at the same height. And the rear fence be replaced at a six-foot height. So at the, the April 14th Planning Commission agenda, our meeting, the, the north neighbor expressed concern about lowering the height of the fence. And the applicant has responded by proposing a one and a half foot tall retaining wall and then a six-foot, six-foot fence on top of that, so the overall height will not change. And then along the rear west property line, the applicant is proposing the same one and a half foot tall retaining wall, but topped by a five-foot six fence. That fence will exceed the, the allowed height limits. And so the commission, the municipal code requires that the commission is, is permitted to grant approval of fences exceeding six feet in height. So staff recommends that the commission approve the request since half of that rear fence is already on a retaining wall. And so half of it will remain the same height. And it, the fence will appear to be a five-foot six fence from the north, from the rear west neighbor's property. So it will not negatively impact them. They're on the upper part of the slope. In regard, so let's see. The, the third recommendation from the planning commission was that the architect shift the second-story addition to provide better sunlight and circulation to the north neighbor. The architect has shifted the second-story addition. Let's see, so the master bedroom was shifted, let's see, master bedroom closet was shifted three feet to the south and the north wall of the second-story staircase was shifted two and a half feet to the south for a total setback of six foot one. Let's see. This also illustrates which exact portions of the upper floor were shifted and to what degree. And then finally, the north wall of the first-floor bathroom and laundry room was also shifted one foot back from the, the north property line. Despite these addition, or despite these changes to the setback of the addition, the architect's sun study, study depicts that sun to the north neighbor's patio will be partially blocked by the addition at noon during months when the sun is at a lower angle. And that if the second-story addition were shifted a foot and And that if the second-story addition were shifted a foot and a half to the south, it would allow noontime sun to reach the North Neighbor's courtyard in the fall and in the spring. However, this sun study only depicts the noontime hours. It does not depict how the sun cast shadow throughout the day. So it's not a sufficient sun study to evaluate the, the full impact on the neighbor. If the commission is concerned about solar access, the commission can continue this item and require a more comprehensive shade study. Let's see. And then in the staff report, staff had indicated concern about the lower, the first floor gable roof that, that is four feet one from the property line. Upon inspection at the property today, staff acknowledges that there, that's sort of not the correct characterization. That portion of the, the gable roof overlaps with a blank wall on the neighboring property. So staff does not have a, a concern any longer. And so it is, so condition of approval number 29 requires that that first-floor building element be pushed to the south one foot. If the commission agrees and is not concerned based on what you saw on the site today about, about the, the setback, the commission can change condition of approval number 29 or, or remove it entirely. Let's see. In regard to solar access regarding the second story, the North Neighbor, Ms. Williams, has sent staff an email stating that she still has concerns about the massing of the addition and specifically the second-story portion. Her letter requests that the second story be moved three additional feet to the south. She feels the proposal will negatively affect the value of her house. While a six-foot setback is reasonable for, for a two, 20-foot nine-second story addition, 24 feet would be the, the maximum. In, in staff's opinion, the, the addition does still appear imposing from the North Neighbor's property. And the architect's sun study indicates it will sometimes affect light to the North Neighbor's property. Staff recommends that the upper floor be shifted an additional foot and a half to two feet to the south, provided that the building foundation maintain a seven-foot setback from the, the Monterey, from the Monterey pine tree on the south side. So the whole addition cannot shift, just the upper floor can shift. The, the city forester wants the south side of the residence to maintain the existing seven-foot setback from that significant Monterey pine tree. So that is what condition of approval number 30 states. Let's see. In regard to finish details, Design Guideline 9.5 encourages the use of natural materials such as wood that are also compatible with a village in a forest context. The second-story addition and detached garage will be clad with board and batten siding to match the existing residence. And the body of the residence will be painted Kellymore Dry Lake White and all doors and windows will be painted breezy indigo, as shown on this slide. A Rhiolite stone veneer and a dry stack lay will be installed at the base of the new front entry porch and the columns and on the east chimney and a stone wainscot will be installed on all four sides of the garage. The roof material will be a triple-layer presidential TL composition shingle and the aged bark color, aged bark color. The, the driveway is proposed, proposed to be nine foot six in width. And then the, the patios and walkways and stairs will be cream tan brown in color, as shown on the slide. So staff finds that the proposed finished materials comply with the residential design guidelines. The project is proposing 493 square feet of site coverage and it will be, 50% will be permeable. And so this is in compliance with the maximum 556 square feet allowed for this 4,000 square foot lot. And then that's just the elevations of the garage and then the, the, the specific stone to be installed is the wainscot. In regard to the lighting, the applicant is proposing seven shielded down-facing incandescent wall fixtures that will have a 25 watt bulb installed. The applicant is also proposing five shielded down-facing landscape lights limited to 215 lumens in brightness and spaced 10 feet apart. The number of locations, fixture type and brightness of the proposed fixtures complies with the requirements of the municipal code. And so staff's recommendation is that the commission adopt a resolution approving the final design study and associated coastal development permit for a 1,073 square foot two-story addition at the rear of the residence as conditioned. And so if the, and again, if the commission wants to change a few of the conditions, you're, you're welcome to amend the, the proposed conditions. And so that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Catherine from the commissioners?
No, I don't have any.
Not this time, thanks.
Okay, I don't have any questions either. So thank you, Catherine, very much. So this will be your last presentation to us.
Yeah, and, and I just wanted to say thank you and it's been an amazing learning experience and, and just thank, thank you. Thank you for your, your knowledgeable teaching of, of staff as well. And it's just been wonderful. Thank you.
You're quite welcome, Catherine. Okay, would the applicant like to make their presentation at this time to the planning commission?
Yes, I would. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, am I on?
Yeah, I think you're sharing your screen too.
Oh, yeah, because I did want to, yeah, I did want to indicate the revised sun study. Can you see that?
Would you prefer that I share it or would you, it's up to you. I did include it in my PowerPoint. Would you want me to present that?
Yeah, Catherine, if you don't mind, if we could just have that up, that would be really great.
That's the one.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just, I had a couple of impressions that I would like to share with the commission. Good evening. My name is James Smith, the architect. And the owner is on and he would also like to make a few comments after me, just FYI. So a few things became evident to me today after visiting the site. The first is that the sun study provided to the commission previously did not accurately show the raised level of the neighbor's patio. This patio is actually well above the assumed ground plane. I didn't have a survey done of her property, so we were estimating these things. But it appears to me that this, this patio is, is higher than was assumed and that any possible shading impact is therefore even less as it, as is indicated on this revised diagram. The presumed shading issue has been fully addressed, we feel, by the commission's earlier demand that we shift 30 inches to three feet to the south. Our second story appears to me to be a very modest from the perspective of her patio. I understand it's a change, but we feel that we've done what the commission has asked. And the second thing that is evident is that this courtyard is not off of any main living space, but rather a smaller egress patio that also provides some light and air to bedrooms, light and air which these rooms will continue to enjoy after our addition. There is a main, much larger courtyard closer to the street, which we have respected by remaining one story in that area. And finally, the neighbor's comment at the site of wanting the second story to be pushed three feet to the south, it, it seemed apparent that the real concern is not the shading, but, but just simply the the attempt to get the massing pushed away from her. That's understandable, but I just don't feel that the shading impact is what's really at play here anymore. I don't know what the exact metric is for the city to consider these things, but given that there's a large tree and that her project, her project is elevated and we're significantly lowered, you know, as far as our plate heights, I, I just don't see the impact there without a real shading study. Perhaps that would show a different story. But we feel that what we have done in terms of her shifting was a reasonable request initially. We do not feel that the second request is reasonable. We don't feel that any further conditioning of the project is appropriate. As I have enumerated in my letter, further shifting the project is going to negatively impact various aspects to the project, not to mention the time and expense of these repeated hearings. So we ask that this project be, be approved as submitted. Thank you for your consideration and I think the owner would also like to speak if you don't mind.
Hello, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You'll have three minutes.
Awesome. Well, let me just start by saying thank you, Catherine, for your time. You know, transitioning and during, during this period is always, always stressful. And I just, you know, we appreciate your time spent on this project. I would just like to address some of the concerns that Jane, James had pointed out. My name's Kyle, by the way. I represent the ownership group. And to start, you know, we did, we did already move the house three feet to the south and that in itself worked for just the way that the house lined up, all of the rooms. And, you know, one of the concerns is that this is a new construction. It's not a new construction. This is a remodel addition. Another concern that was brought up was the fact that we're a developer. No, we've owned the house for six years and we actually use it for our own internal ownership group as, as our house. So it's, this isn't a development where we're leaving after. And three, you know, another foot, another two feet would actually then kind of off-center a few of the rooms that line up very nicely and it would just, at the end of the day, it would cost quite a bit more in structural to line this up appropriate to the bottom floor. So, you know, we've, we've made a few other concessions with the windows and, and, you know, going above and beyond. I, I, I think that we've, we've done what we can. So we hope that we do not have to move it another foot to two feet over to the south side. Other than that, I want to thank everyone for their time and yeah, that's all.
Thank you. So is there anyone from the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? We see a hand up here. We need to unmute. Just a minute, mister. We've got one ahead of you, Michael. Let me just get that one first.
Sorry.
Somebody called in. No problem. We'll get to you in a minute. Are you, the caller?
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Here we go. Here we go. Okay. We can hear you now.
This is Margie Williams and I'm the neighbor to the north of the construction, the re, remodel. And I want to comment on the architect's comment about me being concerned about the structure, the second story only. I am, that's not true. I am concerned about the vegetation that, that's planted on the side of the house and everything that's on the deck. I, that is a, a very, very, very concern of mine because I love plants. I'm, I work in my yard every day and I enjoy that deck. And so it's not just because of the structure, it is because of the vegetation. Now, my house is already built, established. I can't do anything to my house, but a house that is in the planning stages has options. I had a couple realtors over and both of them said that the way it is now would devalue my property, which I wasn't happy to hear. And I think that the architect at the end, at the tour today and some type of retaliation for me having these concerns, started to talk about the property line, that I'm on their property line and I may have to remove trees from my yard. This is the first time this has been brought up. A property line has never been an issue since all this has started. And I feel that was a type of retaliation. I'm not, I'm glad a new house is being built. I don't care if it's two-story, but I want it not to compromise my property. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I believe you're muted.
That's a problem. Yes, now, Michael, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you, Chair. I, I guess I didn't get the last 45 seconds of her time, correct? My comments quickly are, are related to the, the proposed, the new language in condition of approval number eight. And unfortunately, I don't imagine that we have the, the previous language available for commission members to see. I'm wondering if, if Catherine is able to pull up condition of approval eight in the proposed resolution. But I, I would say this, the, the old language, albeit as we've discovered, reluctant for staff to, to enforce, not to be very protective for residents. And I'm trying to step away objectively from our issue with our neighbor. There, there is, there is what seems to be the potential for ambiguity and that I think could result in a disservice to neighbors who invest a lot of time in, in looking carefully over plans for proposed projects. I very much appreciate Brandon's suggestion that the concept of privacy be somehow woven into this. But still, what I see is a unfolding debate between contractors and planning staff. Contractors who will say the changes that I've gone ahead and made without permission are not substantively out of conformance and therefore you shouldn't be subjecting me to a stop in my project. And that would be, that would be a debate and it would be subjective even among individual planners if they are in fact dealing with different. And for neighbors, it's a tough call to figure out what a privacy issue is. Heard you, I don't know how long the existing language has been around. It certainly was in place in December of 2019 when the Westbrook-Saroyan project was approved. And as I said, we just haven't been successful persuading anyone on city staff to, to enforce it, although it's patently clear that this project should have been stopped. Having said that, I'll, I'll leave this to the commission's discussion of, of where you go from here on this. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to make some comments regarding this application? I don't see any hands up. And I don't hear anyone. Okay, so with that said, I don't hear anyone or see any hands up. I'm going to close the public comments part of the discussion, open it up to the commission for their discussion.
Mr. Chair, if I could, could staff take a moment to respond to public comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I just want to, I just want to point out just a little bit. I do actually have the language here available. This was, this is the item that I teed up at the very beginning under extraordinary business. And I know a couple of the commissioners were not on yet. Staff has made some suggested modifications to condition number eight. And I'm going to share my screen right now so you can see what we've done. Hopefully you can see that. Okay, so here's the, the standard condition, number eight, as was previously written. You can see track changes in here. What staff has done is in an effort to make this condition more practicable in, in the actual application and how, how it has been implemented over the years is, is an attempt to delineate where changes are made, you know, say shifting a light fixture one way or the other, where there was previously planned a light fixture or moving a door slightly where there previously was a door to allow for some staff-level interpretation of general conformance. That's a pretty standard term. This would not relate to things where someone puts in a patio where there was no patio previously planned or installs a light fixture where there was no light fixture installed or installs a door where there was no door installed. And the, the recommendation that I made at the beginning was to add this language here or in a manner that could create a privacy issue for surrounding neighbors. This, this I think would or in a manner that could create a privacy issue for surrounding neighbors. This, this I think would strengthen it even more. And basically what this condition would mean is that if anything is done to a project that is either past that sort of general conformance with the plans that either the planning commission or staff had approved, or if they've done something that's going to create a privacy issue for a neighbor, then it's a stop work order, and they're going to have to get either the city approval or planning commission approval depending on what, what level it's at, if it's a track one or track two. The way the condition was written previously was very black and white, and I, I don't know if that was the intention of the condition. And that's why it's before the planning commission for the policy decision. I don't know if it was the intention of the condition or not, to be so black and white that if any change at all was made, you know, light fixture shifting left or right, door moving, that it's a stop work order and it has to go back to the hearing body for decision. So that's, that's the policy decision for the planning commission and why we brought this forward in this manner, so it can be talked about relative to projects. If the planning commission wants to implement this new language in condition eight, this would be the condition language going forward for all projects. If the planning commission would like to change this language in some way, we can do that. Or if the planning commission would like to put it back to exactly how it was before, you can see with the strike throughs and underlines how it would read, then we can do that as well. But there's, again, this is somewhat of a policy decision that staff is bringing forward for consideration by the planning commission.
So Brandon, this, this seems like, this is separate from the, the application that we are considering. So just for procedurally, should we, do you recommend that we consider this first? Are we, do we need a motion to do this?
So Chair LaPage, the reason that I'm bringing it up with this item is because it is in the resolution for this item as one of the regular conditions. It's on three other projects on your docket this evening as well. So it is, it is within your purview to discuss it as part of this project and the other three projects that are coming forward, because this is part of the resolution and conditions that you are approving for this specific project.
In that context, we will discuss it, the planning commissioners will make comments when the, during their, their comments regarding this, this will be one of the issues that they'll speak about, and then we will include that in our, our motion.
Thank you.
Okay, having said that, I believe I was about to ask for comments from the planning commissioners. So.
Mr. Chair, may I make a, a quick comment in regards to the allegation?
You, you have three minutes to make a rebuttal.
Yeah, no, I, I don't want to go on about it. I just, there was nothing vindictive about the comment in regards to the trees. They're, they're unfortunately right on the property line, and there's just nothing that we can, well, there's something we can do there to maintain privacy for both of us, but I, it wasn't anything vindictive. I'm just pointing out the conditions in the field there. So we all want our privacy, and of course, we want to, you know, assist with that effort on both sides. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I'm going to close the public comments, open it up to the commissioners for their comments. Mr. Bolton, would you like to begin?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I think I'm going to start with the resolution number eight, because that's fresh in my mind. Could we get that back on the screen though, Brandon?
Absolutely. Standby.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Um, so briefly, I'm not certain that I read this the same way as the director and staff does. If the applicant changes a project without first obtaining city approval, the applicant will be required to either submit a change in writing and cease all work on the project until either the planning commission or staff has approved the change. I'm not going to bother with it, so you know. I think that gives the desired leeway already, because you have the ability at the staff level to approve the changes according to this language, the way I read it. I have an issue with the word substantively. I understand that is a term of art in your, in planning and, and I understand it's not somewhat opaque to the public what that means. But I'm somewhat concerned that that is a little bit too much leeway. Wherein, for instance, if a window were moved, that can be a, you know, a point of discussion that could change projects significantly and potentially. I, I don't know. I just have, I don't know that this is necessary to change number eight. I definitely would encourage something to say about the privacy issue if we were to do it, but I think that's, we still need maybe even more language in there. And so I think it, it's going to become a potentially wordy number eight condition of approval. And I think it's probably okay as it is. Anyway, that's it on that. Regarding this project as a whole, standing on the site today, it still seems that there is a fairly large mass right up against this property line. And I would like to see at least a sun study, a real sun study, showing what the impact would be to the courtyard. Or I agree with the staff's recommendations for still further moving the upper story slightly to the south. Beyond that, I don't really have any.
From the last meeting, which was two meetings ago, because we've had another meeting in between our special meeting, but I, I wrote then, I, I, I really do feel uncomfortable with this addition. And I, you know, I'm not opposed to development at all, obviously. But I do feel like, when I didn't realize it until I went next door to the neighbors originally, how how close this addition, this second story addition was to her, and that's pretty emphatic that the addition of the second story had to move. And I did point out then, and I've reviewed it again, there is, in the least punitive, there's, there's an eight-foot setback to the south. And in just one small area, and in most of that setback from the second story to the south fence line, it's, it's over ten feet. And I don't understand why this wasn't originally looked at, that the second story addition could have been balanced in and moved away from the neighbor on the north, why the, the side yard setback is so encroached upon. And her house is encroached upon. It's a two-story house looming really over a single-story house. And I feel like her, her asking for this to be moved another three feet is generous. There's, there's lots of room to move it to the south, and I think it should, it should move to the south. I'm, I'm sorry, James, I really don't want to sound that punitive, but I feel like it's, it's, it, it will affect the, the, the value of her home. And I, I think our job is to make sure that we don't have a neighbor that's absolutely made miserable because she's lost her sunshine and her light and her air. And so I am really emphatic that I think this has to be moved. As far as addressing number eight, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners that I don't think we should add these words. I, I just see it rife with all sorts of problems, both for the and the builder and for the neighbors and, and for the, for the owner of the, of the home that's waiting for their home to be built. You know, when we say cease all work on a project, how long are we going to let them cease all work until they can get on the schedule for the planning commission? Are we going to do, we want an immediate hearing, so it will be on the next planning commission, which means very possibly that the guys that are working on this house get laid off for a month. Are we going to have the building inspector, as he inspects things, say, hey, this is bad, that you got to put it back to the way it's supposed to be, or else we will have a stop work? Is there a, you know, it's just rife with just terror in this thing. And I, I, you know, I, I, I think we've got to rewrite it, but I think it's got to have a better solution, and I think it has to be balanced. For, there are two sides to this issue. If the plans get changed, yes, I think if they're approved, they have to be built to the approved plans. But I don't think subjecting people to another hearing before the planning commission, I think this is staff's job, and not even the planners, but I think this is the job of the building inspector. When he sees something that's not right, he has to say, correct it. And so that's really where I am. I don't want to see guys laid off for a month or two until they can get before the planning commission. So that's where I am for right now.
Mr. Chair, could I add a little bit of context? Because I, I'm hearing a similar, a similar thought from all the commissioners, and this is really helpful for us in this policy discussion.
Yes, I think we could use, also, I, I, if you're, you're going to make some comments, maybe you could speak to your intent, what you're trying to do here.
Yeah, thank you. And, and so I, I totally agree with what the commissioners are saying and, and not wanting to create a confusing situation or giving more discretion, giving more latitude for folks. Because as you know, you know, previously, we brought an item, you know, to take skylights out. So we're, we're, in, in the department, we're very much on board with not allowing wiggle room past the plans. The intent of this language was sort of where Commissioner Lehman was going, was that when we have small changes, like I keep using the example of, you know, shifting a light fixture over, moving a door over, those technically, the way that this was previously written was, that's an immediate stop work order until they can get to either the planning commission or the planning staff, depending on what the change is. And so I was trying to create a situation to avoid what Commissioner Lehman was talking about, where that cease work order essentially kills a project, people are laid off while we, while we try to resolve the, the small change, things that are in general conformance, what was approved of the plan. If someone were to install, you know, an outdoor patio that wasn't part of the plans, we would absolutely stop work that because it, it's a large, it's a large change. It's going to be impactful to the neighbors. So I was trying to find a creative way to, to get around the stop work for very minor things, where, where they would resolve it, we would sign off on it in the building side of things, but it wouldn't be a stop work order, and it wouldn't take the time to go through the planning. Because even the language that we're proposing, even if that goes away, the, the cease work for on all projects when there's a change still remains in there. That was really the part of the condition that we, we were trying to address initially. So one other option could be to, to put some language in this condition moving forward that, you know, the, the stop work order, the cease all work is at the discretion of the building official and the director of community planning and building. That would be one option, so that it puts some discretion in our hands, because the way this is written, it's very black and white. Any change, regardless of how small, is a stop work order. So that's, that was the intent of this. It was by no means, trust me, a, a way to give, try to find workaround space or anything like that, or latitude, because I, I just, I don't operate that way. I was trying to find a place of, you know, rational thought when there's minor changes that we can just approve quickly and not have to go through the whole stop work order process and possibly bring it back through a hearing. So hopefully that adds a little bit of context to what we are trying to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolton, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I have further comment regarding number eight and the chair's, or the director's comments. Okay, so in all this discussion, it's post facto. If you read this, this rule, number eight, it says, if the applicant changes a project without first obtaining city approval, then it triggers these other conditions, or this, the rest of the, of the number eight. I've developed in this area. I know Commissioner Lehman has. And when we have a change in our projects, we come to the city and seek permission. And then we obtain that permission, and then we proceed with our project. So we never get into a situation where there has been a change that is discovered by somebody, or a neighbor has to complain, or the inspector has to find or be very careful about measuring where a door or window or a light fixture is. So I like this language because it puts the onus, first of all, on the person doing the building, the person seeking the permit to come to the city and request a change. And I want them to do that. I don't want people to think they can just change something in the field and then have a relatively easy way, or not easy way, of getting it approved. You should build what you're designed, what you have approved. I understand that things happen when you're building, or you discover things, or conditions change, or whatever. That's why there's language here that says you can come to the city and obtain approval without having to end up with a stop work order. Now, I'm not as familiar, obviously, with all of our code as the director. And perhaps this language is insufficient where it says without first coming to the city, maybe that needs to be beefed up. What is the process for if you have a change in your project coming forward or moving forward during construction, and you need to have it addressed? We should have an easy way to come to the city and possibly even have simple things addressed at the staff level, and I know in my projects that has happened. So I'm just not really comfortable with these changes. I'd like to see it remain exactly as it is for the time being, until we can have perhaps a workshop or a fairly long discussion about how this would change. I think it has the appropriate teeth in it, and I think it puts the appropriate onus on the developer or the, or the owner of the property making the proposal to come to the city before there's an issue and get approval. And I think that's the end of my comment for now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bolton. I think all the commissioners have commented at this time, except for myself. I guess with regards to standard condition number eight, and, and it might be a question in here for direct, the director, as it, as it, as it was written, it seems to me what the director was trying to do was to provide more opportunity for staff to handle this type of situation, rather than just going to, having to go to the planning commission for very small changes, as he gave the example of just moving a light. So the introduction of the word substantial in conformance to, he took the language away now, but building practices, was that, was he took the language away now, but uh, building practices, was that, was that the intent? Was that in your intent, Director?
Y- yes, Mr. Chair, it was, and, and Commissioner Bolton definitely read it correctly. Um, there's all post facto. Uh, the introduction of those terms were to carve out those, those minor ones so that those would not need to have a cease work order placed on them. It could just be done at the staff level quickly. Um, but that, so that was the intent of that. Really what, what we're trying to, we're trying to separate here is the ability to um, to have some discretion at the staff level of when, when a cease and, you know, stop work order needs to be placed on a project for, for very minor things that can be taken care of in the moment.
Okay, with that having been said, it seems to me the intent of the language is to provide some discretion for the staff to handle small minor changes. Now, whether or not the language uh, supports that intent, I think that's what the focus of the commission's discussion should be on. It seems that Commissioner Bolton feels that as it's written, it's adequate. So um, I would ask that the uh commissioners address that issue. So if they agree with the intent that there needs to be more discretion on the part of the staff to handle these, and if they do, then do they, do the commissioners think that the proposed language changes provide uh, adequate, are adequate to do that or there needs to be changes? So I'm trying to, I'm trying to get focused on this. So um, having said that, could we, could we have a possibly a short discussion on that?
Well, sir, can I start?
Commissioner, Commissioner Locke, did you say you want to start?
Yeah, and I'm
Okay, jump in.
I'm looking at the language and I think the, I think it is sufficient right now because um, it basically says if you're going to change your plans, you need to get approval from the, either the planning commission or staff. So that language or staff has approved the change gives staff the leeway to do that. I think um, adding the word substantial in there, we don't have a definition for that. And unless you have a definition, um, it could be all over the place. But I think the way it's written right now, it gives staff the leeway to make a determination as to whether it needs to come back to the commission or whether um, it's, it's a small thing that, that could be done at the staff level.
Okay, uh, Mr. Dells, what is your thoughts?
Um, I, I, I'm still trying to understand what exactly Brandon is trying to get. But I, I think what I'm hearing him say is that he's, he doesn't want to drive every change through a, a stop work order. Um, and that I understand um, because a stop work order is extreme. And you know, before, when we were talking about this, I used the word, you know, abusive builder, a builder who was abusing the system. Um, in this case, as written, um, I, I could see once a, there's the potential for um, abusive staff where um, once a stop work order is in place, nothing can happen. And that, that should not be allowed to stop a project in its tracks for a long period of time um, when the issue is actually minor. Um, so um, maybe that's where we should focus this, Brandon, is um, is, is just there. Um, that, that, that the, the remedy um, for a change doesn't have to be a stop work order.
Thank you, Commissioner Dells. I think you, you've helped explain kind of where I was driving that. I think, you know, I've changed it back to the original language here. Um, and, and one solution may be to add, add just a couple of words here where it talks about cease, ceasing all work. Um, you can, that, that discretion for issuing a stop work order could be given to the building official and the director of community building and planning.
Oh, that, that works for me. Okay, uh, Mr. Lehman, do you want to make a comment on that?
Um, I, well, I'm, I'm, you, you know, I'm happy that Commissioner Bolton was um, so clear on, on this. And I do think he did bring up a great suggestion, which is, I think we need a workshop on this um, not too injected into a meeting. I um, what I like that is not in here is that um, what was uh, in your changes um, um, Brandon was that um, the neighbors, well, this brought up something that I had gone through. Um, I built a house um, on Forest Road um, about oh, maybe 10 years ago and, or less. And uh, we boarded on several neighbors because the, the lot was unusually large. And um, so we, we had some extra neighbors around us. And we had one particular neighbor who was very, very angry at the house being built. And he was um, angry all the time. And he had some um, some problems. And every afternoon he would get super angry and he'd call the building department and speak to um, to John, who was the building inspector then, and he'd say, she's not building it to plans. It's three inches off. And the next day it would be two inches off. And the next day it would be six inches off. And it was always right on the money. And, and he would have to go out there every day to pacify the neighbor. So um, or, or just tell the neighbor that this was inappropriate. And um, but we went through this for the whole project. And it was um, it was pretty ugly. So I don't like the idea of, of the, you know, I, I know we're addressing something that um, um, has been brought up at this meeting twice now and um, with the neighbor. And certainly um, I, I think that the director and um, the, both the planning director yourself and the um, um, building official should be um, conferring with the neighbors before we think about going into a stop work order. If um, I mean, this would have been insanity on this particular project. And I see that this could happen again. And perhaps there's one small area, maybe the garage um, looks to be a couple of inches, you know, south or north of where it's supposed to be. And so do you stop work on the whole house then? And lay off a, a whole crew for a week or two weeks? Or, you know, I mean, we've got people's jobs and, you know, that are important to them. Um, so you know, I think these are things that have to be addressed. And I think um, they need to be discussed. And I'm certainly glad to meet a, a, again, outside of a, a regular meeting um, to kind of hammer this out. But yeah, that's where I am.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Uh, Brandon, I see you're typing a lot of language in there. Um, you know, I'm going to make a suggestion here, which is pretty simple. It may not do it, but I'm going to throw it out there. They say before it said submit the change in writing and cease all work. Why should, why wouldn't you change and to or? I mean, you either submit that, if you, if you don't submit a change in writing, then you have to cease, you have to cease all work. Rather than going into all this other verbiage. I mean, it's, it's, it's an either or thing. You either submit the change in writing or you cease work.
If they submit a change and continue working, they may get to a point where then they won't want to put it back if it's found to be in violation.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest, Mr. Chair, that um, we, we definitely want them to submit the change in writing either way and then
Okay, so or then, or they have, they can, they have the option to cease work?
Yeah, I think this language looks much better.
Okay, so what have we got now? You've got uh, you've got a new sentence. A cease work order may be issued at the discretion of the director or the building official until either the plan, okay, I, that seems to be clearer.
Yeah, and I think, I think if I'm, if I'm hearing the other commissioners, one thing that we may do is rather than a separate workshop on its own, we can agendize, we can do it as part of a regular agenda for the planning commission. We can agendize a, a more in-depth conversation about this condition language, but then also how we want to approach after the fact permits and things like that in general. Because I think it has come up, just in the short time I've been here more than once. And it would be wonderful, I think, to get some philosophy and thoughts from the commission in general, not only for staff, so when we're talking to folks, but also just for the general public, so they're aware, you know, that the commission's stance on these things is, don't come asking for forgiveness, ask for permission first. So I think if we agendize an item to just talk about modifications and after the fact permits on a regular agenda here, maybe even for next month, so in June, um, maybe that would also help as well. And we can bring this condition language back to beat up a little bit more if we'd like.
It seems like that's appropriate because this is a larger discussion.
Okay.
And I'm sure, I'm sure that the public, the public would like to uh, have some input on that, more input.
Yeah. If, if the commission is okay with this language, we can make this the language in the, the four resolutions tonight that had a modification to condition number eight.
Okay, um, Brandon, you feel it's urgent enough to do that to just these four things? If we're going to agendize this potentially next month?
I'll leave that to the discretion of the commission. Uh, we can, we can put it back to the original language or we can leave this as it is. Um, I, I don't, I don't have a uh,
Can we, can we just do a separate, can we do a motion on this? So we can just get this out of the way one way or the other? Okay.
Then I think we adopt the changes to uh, condition number eight as proposed at this time with two separate sentences that gives the director and, and/or building official the um, the option of stopping work if they feel that the project um, changes are, are, are enough to cause for a stop work.
Could I make the suggestion that you include your motion with the understanding that this item will be agendized for further discussion?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the change to the standard condition number eight as presented by the director this evening with the understanding that we will have further discussion at this agenda at our next meeting. Any further discussion?
I'll just make a comment that I don't like having one small set of projects that have different rules slightly than the others. That's all.
Okay, any, any more discussion?
Um, yeah, I have the same concern that we, we, we're creating four projects with unique language, different from years of previous projects and a bunch of future projects that will have new language that we agree on in a workshop or in some future thing. So I'm, I'm just concerned we're creating a bit of an administrative
Do, do we have a substitute motion?
Mine would be just leave the language as is for these four um, until we have a chance to decide what the language really should be.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a substitute motion to leave the language as is in our standard condition number eight. So we will, that motion we will vote on first. Uh, is there any more discussion on the substitute motion? There are none, roll call on the substitute motion?
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner LaPage?
Yes. Okay, the motion passes that we will leave the language uh, in standard condition number eight and we will agendize this for uh, hopefully our next meeting. Okay, having said that, let's get back to this application. I think I'm the only one who hasn't made any comments. I, my feeling is uh, that uh, there, there were impacts from the second story, yes, to neighbor to the north. But the planning commission gave specific uh, decision, uh, direction to the applicant uh, to move it and the applicant did that. And um, I think the uh, the impacts have been mitigated to a degree that they are not substantial. Also, um, the applicant has a patio, a very nice patio on the south side of a property, which the applicant designed the second story addition, so it had no impacts on that at all. And the applicant uh, followed the direction of the planning commission at the last meeting and moved the uh, second story addition significantly to the south. So my feeling is that the applicant has met the direction of this planning commission and that um, at this time, the, as it's being presented, that uh, it, it, the findings of staff are that uh, it's okay, although staff did mention in their condition number 30, I think to shift the, the second story. But I feel like the applicant has, has meant the direction of the planning commission. So that's all I have to say on that. So the chair will entertain a uh, a motion with regards to this application. Unless there are further, does it feel, any of the commissioners feel they need further discussion? Although I think a motion at this time will help focus our, any further discussion we may want to have in this project.
Um, so Chairman, um, I think I'm hearing that this is maybe a, that there are two of us that think that um, the applicant did what we asked and that we should go forward. And I think I hear three on the other side. Would it perhaps be beneficial for me to have a motion um, supporting the project to tease that out?
Um, well, yes, and that's, that's, that's the benefit of having a motion. This motion will focus the uh, uh, the decisions and then hopefully, you know, move this project to one conclusion or the other. So I'll do it, so that's why I said at this time, I, I felt like each commissioner did present their, your view and that uh, a motion would help to, to focus this movement along. So if somebody would like
So I'll, I'll make that, I'll make that motion that um, to approve um, this project um, as revised from preliminary. And uh, should that motion be approved, we will, we'll have a subsequent motion specifically on the resolution. Do you understand that?
Uh, well, I would suggest you make your motion in the context of the resolution. And then if you want to change the special conditions, we have, we have special condition number 29, which staff said they are, would like to withdraw. And then special condition number 30, where they're requesting that the, or they're making a special condition that the second story be shifted. I think it was one foot six to the south. I'm not looking at the resolution at the moment, I should probably pull it up. Give me a moment, I can pull it up. Just one moment here. Okay, let me get down here to special conditions. Sorry, this is taking a little bit of time.
Michael, I could help you out if you
Oh, here we are, okay, I've got now. Okay, so special condition number 27 is just uh, excavation which in, within the treat structural root zone. Special condition number 28 refers to the obscured glass on the north side, second story windows. Special condition number 29, which staff uh, suggests to be removed, is move the first floor, north side bathroom and laundry room to the south. And special condition number 30 is shift the second floor to the south. Second story addition shall be shifted one foot six to two feet to the south, provided the building foundation remain the seven foot setback to the Monterey pine tree on the south side of the residence. So Commissioner Dells, uh, if you want to make your, so basically the resolution is in, in support of the project as presented, but with the special condition. So if you want to change that with regards to the second story, then you would remove special condition uh, number 20, number 30. And then uh, staff recommended removing number 29 too. So in that context, do you want to make your motion?
Yeah, I'll make that, uh, exactly. I'll make the motion to approve this resolution in a, that's in our packet with the removal of um, special condition 30. Um, and what was the other one? Sorry?
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine.
Uh, twenty, yeah.
Okay, um, we have a motion to accept the application as presented by staff with the removal of special conditions number 29, number 30. Do we have a second on that? I will second that motion. Do we have a substitute motion? Do we have a substitute motion? Okay, do we have further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, uh, roll call please.
Yes. Commissioner Bolton?
No.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
No.
Commissioner Locke?
No.
Commissioner LaPage?
Yes. Okay, the motion is not carried. Uh, again, do we have a substitute motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve this project. Subject to the conditions of approval with the exception of number twenty-nine, leaving thirty in place.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the uh, to approve the resolution with removal of special condition number twenty-nine.
Can I, can I add a clarification to that, please?
Yes.
Um, I, the condition number thirty says, um, it shall be shifted one foot six to two feet to the south. And I'd like to say two feet to the south, eliminate the one foot six.
Commissioner Bolton, do you want to amend your motion?
Well, I should amend it anyway. To be fair, when I had made my statement earlier, I had stated that I would also um. Potentially accept this plan with a sun study demonstrating that it was in fact not impacting the neighbor. Um, well, I'm gonna have to withdraw that previous motion and make a new one.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so I'll make a new motion now to accept this project. With the conditions of approval with the following modifications, dropping number third, number twenty-nine. And setting the number thirty to be the two foot number of that one foot six to two foot range. And adding an additional uh condition or an off, I don't know how to phrase this part. I want to give the option to do a sun study and submit that for our approval. Which we might very well prove. Or simply move the house and then they don't have to do the sub-study. So how do I phrase that part of the this, for this?
Move, move the, the uh, it sounds like you're making the. The uh, the study, the sun study conditional upon them moving the second story addition?
No, I'd rather, I would like to see if, if the, if the uh applicant wants to maintain the current. Proposed design. I would like to see a sun study, an actual sun study, not just one at noon for a couple of days. That demonstrates that there is no impact or demonstrate what the impact is to the neighbor. Alternatively, instead of doing a sun study and coming back for another review by us, they can simply move the house the two feet.
Okay, so your, 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 your new condition, special condition, condition will be that the applicant. Shall either move the second story two feet to the south. Or come back to the.
Planning Commission give a sun study.
With, with a uh, a shade study or a sun study?
The sun study demonstrating, yeah, the sun study demonstrating there's not the shading impact to the neighbor.
Okay, so that's a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, roll call please.
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner LaPage?
Yes. Okay, the motion, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your work on that one. That was a very heady, heady item. We're through that condition and I appreciate your good work and we'll look forward to the conversation on the condition on the next uh planning commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Swanson, too. Okay. Uh, the next item on the public carrying this evening. Is number seven. This is a design study. It's. Two zero dash one nine six to Turner Projects, consideration of final design study and associated coastal development. For the construction of a two-story eighteen hundred square foot single-family dwelling. Inclusive of an attached garage on a vacant lot located at Mission Street five northwest of San Lucia. We have staff report, please.
Marty, I believe you're muted if you're talking.
I was muted, my apologies.
We can see your screen now.
Okay. So uh, before you uh, this afternoon is the Turner Project. This is a final design study and coastal development permit. So the planning commission originally reviewed the concept design study back in December of twenty twenty. Um, accepted the concept with conditions. Uh, the project site is on Mission Street five northwest of Santa Lucia and is currently a vacant lot. Uh, the project includes the removal of four trees, which was approved by the Forest and Beach Commission. Who also imposed a twenty-foot setback from a pine tree at the rear of the property. So at the concept design study, the recommendations that were adopted included tree protection measures. Uh, maintaining the twenty-foot setback from the Monterey pine. Uh, identifying whether or not window grids were going to be included um. Clarifying the, the driveway material, modifying a retaining wall section. Uh, removing a portion of the retaining wall from the right away. Um, and, and a couple other minor adjustments. So I'm gonna kind of walk through these um. Fairly quickly. Uh, so the architect has revised the plans um to ensure the twenty-foot setback from the Monterey pine. This was accomplished by redesigning the rear portion of the, of the house. Um, you can also see on the site plan that the tree protection zones and the, the hand dig zones have been clearly identified. Uh, which was something that, that staff had requested um and the architect provided. So this is a comparison of the modifications to the rear of the house. Uh, you can see how it, the, the rear portion has been elongated in order to achieve uh that twenty-foot setback. Uh, one of the special conditions was also revising the retaining wall along the north property line. Just to ensure that no portion of the wall or the footing encroached onto the neighboring property. Um, and that has been accomplished with this revised detail. Additionally, the chimney cap has been revised to meet the municipal code uh dimensions of two feet wide. Um, the applicant was also asked to provide a line of sight study uh to evaluate um privacy impacts to the west neighbor. Um, so this is the view impact study that was prepared. Uh, the applicant is proposing to plant a privacy hedge along the rear property line. Um, to further mitigate um any kind of privacy impacts. Um, this diagram shows that the rear balcony is about twenty-two, almost twenty-three feet from the rear property line. Um, and there's another approximately forty feet to the west neighbor's uh rear patio. One other minor modification was an adjustment to the plate height to make sure that it didn't exceed the eighteen feet. And that has been accomplished. And the applicant has clarified um uh with the window schedule that no window grids are proposed uh for this project. Um, he is proposing unclad wood windows. The majority of them are fixed. Uh, there's a couple casement and awning windows. Um, and the window schedule is included in your packet. This is final design study, so the applicant has provided the finished materials. The wall cladding is going to be a wood siding with vertical slats. The color scheme is a grayish beige kind of body color. Um, referred to as Balboa mist with a brownish gray trim. And I can't read the name of that one, um, but you can see those there on the slide. Uh, the applicant's also proposing a dark gray metal roof, earth tone pavers uh in stone veneer. All of the exterior lighting uh meets our requirements for shielded. Uh, downward facing as well as the lumen levels. Um, and then the uh front yard fence. Design is proposed to be stucco columns with uh steel pickets. So since the uh concept hearing, staff did receive a number of public comments. Uh, regarding the roof form and the roof material for this project. Uh, those comments included that the building and roof form was inconsistent with our residential design guidelines. Uh, the roof is a six and twelve pitch, uh, which is within the recommended. Um, pitch in the design guidelines. Um, the roof forms are very simple, front and side facing gables. Uh, staff does not feel that these are particularly, you know, complicated or complex. Um, with regards to the metal roof. The public comments uh received was that it's out of character with Carmel as well as with this particular neighborhood. Um, and that metal roofs are generally an eyesore. Um, the public comments uh were fairly consistent in. Uh, suggesting that a more traditional roof material be chosen. Um, such as slate, asphalt, wood, or um concrete. Uh, staff did provide a sample of the roof material to the commission on the tour today. Um, and we can certainly talk uh further. Um, about that. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving um this final design study. As well as the associated coastal development permit. And then just really quickly, some of the special conditions included in your resolution include the requirement for our pre-construction meeting with the project planner. Carrying those tree protection zones and measures through the building permit plans. Um, also something staff wanted to include, um, the plans do indicate the windows are actually an unclad wood. Um, but oftentimes, once we get to the construction phase. Um, the owners decide that they want aluminum clad, so staff is asking the commission to consider both. Um, and, and, you know, give some direction as to whether either material would be appropriate. Um. And then additional conditions that you might want to consider, um, the front yard fence material. Uh, staff did not uh realize that there were steel pickets in the fence until after the publication of a staff report. Um, so that may be something to discuss. Um, and then also the roof material, uh, whether the metal is appropriate for this project. So with that, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
No, thanks.
Okay, I don't hear any. Commissioners want any questions? Okay, would the applicant like to make their presentation to the planning commission? The applicant, she'll have five minutes for initial with a three-minute rebuttal if necessary.
Good afternoon, Chairman LaPage and members of the planning commission, uh, Claudia Ortiz, I'm representing um. John and Liz Turner of the project. Good morning for the presentation and going over the details as to what was changed on the project and modified. Um, I like to start by saying or like to get to the main. Issues that are, were raised by the neighbors and also some of the comments brought up on the uh staff report. The um, we like to keep the um recommendation on the uh wood clad and wood windows. If possible, I, you know, the reason why we kept the, or we started with the wood windows is because we're traditionally, traditionally uh accustomed to. Um, uh, proposing those type of windows, but now that we know that we can use wood clad. That might be an option that we like to exercise, so we would like to keep that option. Regarding the, the grids or the muttons. Uh, we feel the, that the architecture in this uh house is appropriate to um, to have a um. Just a single pane for each of the windows, but I'm open to your suggestion and, and exploring that option. The uh, the uh, the roof is probably the main issue. Um, but actually, let me jump into the, the fence really quick because that's a minor one. On the fence, I would like to keep the fence with a wood metal. It's not just gonna be just a regular wood metal, it's gonna be a core ten. And we also want to use that on the, on the entry door as well, so we want to maintain that consistency on those materials and. Core ten is a material that is. It looks age old and it looks rustic. And I think it'll be really appropriate with the style of the, of the architecture proposing this modern. And mixing in the, the old um elements to, to bring a nice balance to, to a whole project. So I like to keep that fence uh as an architectural theme for this project. Um, now addressing the roof. I know there were some neighbors that were concerned about the material. Um, my concern with some of those comments, um. Some of those neighbors are not immediately next to the property. For example, Fred Ben is one of the um uh neighbors who proposed a letter. He's an ex-client of mine. I did the house for him many years ago. And he lives across the street from the mulch property, which is across the street on the adjacent block. So I don't see how he's gonna be affected by the, the metal roof at all. I think to me, it sounds like. Uh, the mulches are talking to the neighbors and trying to gain as many people to support their. Their concerns with a metal roof. So I hope you can keep that in mind, too. Um. There's Linda McNeven. I don't know her location, so I don't know what her concerns are. Uh, Fred Aroso or Arm Aroso, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, is the same thing. I don't know where he's located. Again, he's just addressing the metal roof as um statics issue, but I don't see any um. Immediate concerns to him as well. Uh, Jennifer Holmes as well, and she's probably right across the street from, from this project. Uh, and then um. My concern with their point of view is that they're just attacking the metal. But also, and they're saying that it's not consistent with Carmel and Carmel uh is a very eclectic. It's uh, architecturally styled um city. I mean, we have. From old cottages, eight hundred square feet to Mediterranean style to English. Style cottages and now to the modern style of uh architecture. So. There's a diversity of styles out there and to say that this is not appropriate. It's uh really not understanding how the city has evolved from the early nineteen hundreds until today. If you, if you look through the history of Carmel, you see the progression of different styles that have been. You know, created with a demand of, of, of time. Um, modern architectural style is something that people are proposing. And um, and if you select the correct materials, they do blend really well with the. The trees, the, 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 the natural scape of the trees, the neighborhood. I don't have a lot of time left over unless you're willing to give me some time. I can show you some photos of um. Existing metal roof houses that were approved in Carmel. And how well they blend with the um, the trees and the neighborhood and how the reflection of light is very minimal. If the roof material is selected correctly. That one that we're proposing. It has a uh SRI, which is a solar reflective index of twenty-five. I think I mentioned um to Marty the incorrect. Um, number on that. I think I mentioned twenty-nine, but it's twenty-five. Twenty-three is the lowest and eighty-five for highest reflection. So, um. With that said, we're proposing a material that has the lowest index of reflection. Uh, for this project, which is again twenty-five, eighty-five being the highest, twenty-three being the lowest. Um, I like to elaborate a little bit more on this. I don't have time. Perhaps you can ask me some questions and I can provide more.
Okay, all right, Claudia, we'll see if the, do the commissioners have any uh questions for Claudia? Uh, Claudia, so on the roof, you're, you're uh, what's the uh, the SRI index on that material?
It's on twenty-five.
And that's the lowest?
Twenty-three is the lowest.
Twenty-three is the lowest, okay. And the, and the color is, is kind of a black?
Yes, it's a charcoal gray.
Charcoal, so it's charcoal, it's a very, it's a dark charcoal gray.
I, I know that uh, Mulch brought up that concern about heat reflection and, and. Causing issue to the tree canopies. I think that's grasping for straws right there, like looking for some sort of evidence to try to push this whole concept out, out of line, but there's not enough. I did some, I tried to do some research on, on, in front of going to different um websites, trying to find information on this. Information that he selected, it's from Wikipedia, you know, intellectually, we don't use Wikipedia as a source of information. Uh, it's that, like, we have more scientific data in order to consider that. So I don't know where he's getting this information. There's not enough evidence out there. Consider that, but having said that. I just want to make sure that it's understood that we selected the lowest reflective material for this project. So, so anyway, any? I I can't hear you.
My apologies, I got muted there. Are there any other questions for um Claudio regarding the project?
Not at this time.
Claudio, you have three minutes at the end to uh rebut. Okay, uh, at this time, can we have uh comments from the public?
Hi, I would, uh, can I comment at this point?
Yes, go ahead.
There we go, raise hand. Working on this. Um, okay, uh, let me see here, one more minute, please. Okay. In any event, okay, I'm not sure if you can see me, but.
We can see you.
Uh, my name's Paul Munch, and uh my wife and I own the house that that joins the development immediately to the west. So what we're looking at is the rear of the home. Uh, first, I want to thank the commissioners. I know you all are volunteering your time. And I served as a planning commissioner myself for a number of years, and I appreciate your efforts. We um, my wife and I bought our home in Carmel because we were attracted to the charm of Carmel. And a big part of Carmel's charm lies in its roofs, which are actually a trademark for Carmel. Um, when we bought our home, we expected that there would be a will within the community and within the planning commission to maintain that charm. And I don't think we ever would have bought the home if we had known that a home might be built behind us that would have been allowed to have had a metal industrial roof. Um, I know that uh the architect or actually the designer, not an architect, um, had indicated that uh we had a number of other concerns in terms of uh the heat data that might be reflected or uh the sound and the noise. You know, metal roofs are very loud um in the rain. They even have to put insulation on the, under the roof to uh protect the inhabitants from the sound. Anyway, that's that's not the issue I'm dealing with. Mainly, I'm issued with the uh aesthetic issue. Um, and the people that we talked to about this, and it's not like we're drumming up support. We just mentioned it. People are aware that this is happening. And four of the letters came from people who live within, you know, a a hundred feet of this house. One's across the street, one's two doors down, one's uh two more right across the street on the other side of the street. And if people have a visceral reaction to metal roofs, they don't have a visceral reaction to Mediterranean roofs or shake roofs or even asphalt roofs. Metal roofs are just industrial, but connotation is industrial, and there's no way around it. Metal roofs impact the whole block. They impact the whole neighborhood, and everybody seems to agree with that. Um, I, can I share my screen for a second? What we're gonna be looking at, though, is more of a metal wall, because that's all we're really gonna see uh from the back of our house. And most of our house is oriented that way, our patio or master bedroom and our dining area. Um, and it's just, if, is that, is that something I can do, share the content?
Uh, you know, your, your, your time is up. We did go to the site, and and we understand your concern about that. We had uh, we have a drawing or a pack which you presented to illustrate that, so I think I think we understand that. So uh, and we understand your concern is is with the metal roof and how it impacts your particular property and then and the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And so um, I think, I think we've, we've got that point, so we appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else? Let me get down here to the participants, see if anybody's got their hand up.
This is a reminder for those on the meeting, if you want to raise your hand, you can go to the bottom of your screen with your cursor, and there's a button that says reactions. Click on raise hand. Um, if you just want to unmute yourself, if you can't find the raise hand button, uh, you can just unmute yourself. And if you're on a phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine and unmuting yourself by hitting star six. And Mr. Chair, it does look like we have one hand.
Yeah, yeah, we have Ian Martin, I believe, would like to make a comment. Ian, would you like to unmute?
Are we talking about the the rainy rainy project right now?
No, we're not.
Okay, catch you later. Thank you.
All right. Okay, uh, I don't see any other hands up. Is there anybody else that? I guess that's all the public comments we have. Okay, um, Claudio, I said I'd give you three minutes to rebut. Would you like to use your time?
I would, if I can show some photos and some, um, if I can share my screen really quickly. Can I do that? Um, I guess I can't.
I think at the bottom of the uh, so you got it on the bottom there. There you go.
So, so this, the actual view of the neighbor from the rear, he submitted the same um screenshot, but without, and he didn't show the tree, the pine tree, which is substantial in size, and the hedge. So technically, he's only gonna be seeing this section of the roof, but that, this is only a one-dimensional drawing, too. This slopes further away, it's further back. So then what, he's gonna see very little of the roof material. Um, as you can see from this, from this um drawing. And let me get to the, and then on metal roofs, roofs. Now, here's a metal roof in Carmel of of for a house. Um, actually, let me go to you. Now, here's, here's another roof that was just recently built um in Carmel, so you can see. This, this is the view, this is the same roof material between the tree and the fence. And you can see how the the roof blends in really nicely with the the oak trees and the materials, and that's a similar color that we're proposing. Um, let me show you another one that might be a little bit more interesting to appreciate. Here's a a house in in Carmel, but it's on the county side. It has a metal roof, and again, if the correct color is selected, you can see how well it blends in with the the trees and and the and the natural materials. So I feel that when this is done, and I understand Mr. Mulch's concern looking at that roof, and I know there's some bad presentations out there of this material, but what our our proposal is to, you know, come up with a material that is more appropriate, um, that it's more in keeping with the the trees and so on. So I hope he feels at the end that we're trying to propose something that will not be very reflective. It will blend really nicely with the natural materials. And again, I know it's hard to accept this material, but it's something that you're gonna see more and more of out there. I'm not saying that this has to be approved or or is it demand, but what I'm saying is you need to have an open mind. The architecture is moving to a different, a a different sector, and 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 modernism is something that people are requesting more and more of. And so, like I said at the beginning, Carmel, like in many other cities throughout the grass, evolved with time. And as you remember, seeing cottages that were eight hundred square feet, one or two bedrooms, now we see bigger homes, Mediterranean homes, and and it keeps progressing. So I hope you have that open mind, that vision, that what we're proposing is in keeping with Carmel. It is still a cottage, it's still eighteen hundred square feet. And it's, it's, it's appropriate for the size of the lot, and you will see very little of that material when it's all said and done. Um, I don't know what else I can add to this, but I thi- I think we've done our homework, you know, selecting the appropriate material. Thank you.
All right, Claudio. Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to make any comments to the planning commission regarding this application this time? Mr. Munch, you have your hand up again, uh, before I recognize you, uh, if you, I would suggest that you limit your comments to new comments. We understand your objection to the uh the roof, so go ahead, Mr. Munch.
I just wanted to clarify something that uh the designer said. Some of those pictures mentioned or showed were, you know, a lower pitch. This is a six-twelve pitch, which is pretty much in our face at our house. Also, the screening was not uh really reflective of what he's proposed. The vegetation, all he had really proposed were three, five-gallon laurels spread across the forty feet. I think it'd take a long time before three laurels will, um, you know, create that kind of screening. So we're gonna be seeing both levels of that roof um as a wall for some time to come. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munch.
Yes.
Okay, um, I don't see other hands up, nobody chiming in, so I'm gonna close the public comments, open up to commission for their comments. Commissioner Lehman, would you like to begin?
Sure, I'm glad to. Um, I like the house. Um, I um, I want to address this, um, but the objections we're getting to um to roofs. Um, uh, there, there seems to be a misapprehension about shake roofs. Um, uh, that they're fireproof, but they're not fireproof, they're fire resistant because the shingles have been treated. And they, they have been treated with a chemical compound, um, which is very bad for the earth. And um, when the roofs are replaced uh and go into um the landfill, they um, they really pollute this, this, our earth. So um, they're really not the greatest thing in the world, even though, you know, probably seventy percent of the houses in Carmel have shake roofs. And um, I had a shake roof on my house, and I'm, I'm really sorry that I did it. I would love to have a metal roof on my house. So um, it's fireproof. Um, it's, it's a true thirty, forty, fifty years. Um, and um, it it's better for the environment, and um, I, I like the house. One, one suggestion I would like to make about the trees, and I mentioned it when we were on the tour today, is I think, um, I don't know, I just heard um the comment that you've only proposed three trees. I don't think that's correct, but my suggestion would be that um, in order to cover that amount of land, that you put ten trees in, and they would be minimum fifteen gallons. And I think you'll need that many trees in order to get the hiding um for the neighbors. And I think that's important to be good to the neighbors about that. So I would add that to any um, anything, uh, any final uh resolution that um before approving this, so, but I do like the house. Um, I think it's, it's a little bit different. I think it's a hard lot to work with, and I think it's well done. So, that's it.
Commissioner Lehman, do you have any uh comments on the fence?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We've um just turned down, actually, um, Corten Steel um for another fence in the front yard setback, and I think we have to be consistent. So I'm, I'm okay with the roof. Um, uh, it serves many purposes, um, but I am not okay with the Corten Steel posts in the, in the wood fence. And I would like to see if we can do it in wood. That would be great.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Uh, Commissioner Locke, would you like to make some comments?
Sure, um, I'm gonna agree with the Commissioner Lehman. Um, and, you know, just one question, I I believe, well, first of all, I think we're gonna see more and more of the metal roofs just because of the wildfire issues that California is uh going to be experiencing as climate change takes place. Um, one question, and Claudio, I'm kind of curious about this, but um, they also have stamped metal roofs and which looks more of, you know, it can take on the look of different types of our standard roof materials. Um, I haven't seen any of those come through us at this point, but it might be something to look into. Uh, not necessarily for this project, but for future projects. Um, because they, you know, from my research, you can get at least four different types of um, metal, metal stamped roofs that look like other materials. So anyway, we we should probably look into that. I think we're just gonna see more and more of these. Uh, we live in an area that, knock on wood, we don't have a wildfire, but we certainly could, and it would be absolutely catastrophic. So um, I don't have a problem with that, and um, no, I think it's a, I think it's a nice project. Thank you.
Do you have any comments on the fence?
I'm with Commissioner Lehman on that, that we, last week, in fact, the applicants here tonight and or the last meeting, um, that I don't see how we could not be consistent on this.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Locke. Uh, Commissioner Dells?
So I, I did not have the benefit of participating in the, in the conversations when this was uh approved for preliminary, because I wasn't on the commission yet. I'm sorry, I appreciate being a little later um to to learn from my colleagues. Um, I, I'll just leave it as saying I agree um with what Commissioner Lehman has said, both on the roof um and the fence.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, I am in agreement with my fellow commissioners regarding the roof and regarding the fence. And uh, the only other comment I have is regarding the divided lights in the windows. I'm not certain we need those windows to be divided lights. I would be okay with that um condition being dropped. That's it.
In general, I, I would also add that I think Commissioner Lehman's idea on the vegetation of of bigger and more um is very important.
Agreed.
Okay, um, I'm in agreement with the uh, the comments that are made so far. I think that adding vegetation to the uh, the West property line, the number of species of the trees proposed will mitigate the impacts to the neighbor. And uh, I agree that we need to be consistent with uh the types of fences that we approve and the guidelines recommend natural materials. So with that, um, let's take a look. Do we, I mean, do, the only uh item on the resolution which we were uh not in agreement with was get that resolution up here.
Mr. Chair, while you're pulling up the resolution, I would also just recommend that the commission also um, uh, rec, uh, decide to change condition number eight back to the original language, because this is one of the projects that has the modified language.
Okay, yeah, so that's changed on all the resolutions tonight?
All the fi- all the finals, that's correct. And I I will make sure to to bring it up for the commission every time so that we don't accidentally improve that revised language.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, special conditions, we have um special condition number twenty-six, which pre-construction meeting, twenty-seven tree protections zones, uh, twenty-eight tree protection measures. I think that's, that's it, huh? So do we want to add a condition? Uh, Commissioner Lee, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to do that. So I move for approval of, sorry, I'm in the resolution, so I have DS twenty dash one nine six Turner. Um, an associated coastal development permit for the construction of a new single-family dwelling on a vacant lot located on Mission Street, five northwest of Santa Lucia. Um, so um, I would like to add to um, with the special conditions, but um, special condition number eight be um, it's language be consistent with our prior language. Um, and also um, that the landscape plan include um ten um laurels or um of at least a fifteen-gallon size in order to provide protection and privacy to the neighbor um on the um east side, no, on the west side.
West side.
Um, and um uh, the elimination of the Corten Steel posts in the fence, the fence should be all wood. Um, and um, perhaps that can be ascertained at the staff level. And um, we can, uh, the windows can be we can, uh, the windows can be, uh, single, uh, without muttons, um, if the architect prefers, if the architect and the owners.
And do you want to include the special condition that they can have unclad or aluminum clad windows at their discretion?
Yes, yes, I would like to, um, include that, um, that they can have special, clad or unclad wood windows at, at their discretion. So.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the resolution as per staff. With the special condition and modifications that, um, ten fifteen gallon laurels should be planted on the west side. The, uh, front fence shall be wood and meet the, uh, the residential guidelines. And that the applicant at their discretion can have unclad or aluminum clad windows.
Michael, um, excuse me, um, Chair Lepage. That, um, is addressed in, um, which needs to be changed in, um, special condition number twenty-nine. Where the, it says the applicant shall install unclad wood frame windows with true divided lights. And so we're not asking for the true divided lights.
Okay, so, so you're eliminating, you're eliminating, you're modifying, uh, many special condition number twenty-nine to, to eliminate the grids and to give the applicant discretion to use on, uh, unclad or aluminum clad windows.
Exactly. Okay.
Okay. If we understand the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Uh, is there any more discussion on this motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add a piece of clarification. It's, it's minor, but it's on the record. Uh, Commissioner Lehman, uh, said special condition number eight for changing the language. It's standard condition number eight, uh, with respect. Yeah, that's okay. That's okay. I just want to get it on the record so that we're modifying.
Yes, okay, that's part of the motion. The special condition will be changed to reflect the prior language. Okay, um, is there any more discussion, comments? Okay, hearing none. A roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair Lepage?
Yes. Okay, the motion is carried. Okay, thank you, everyone. Uh, the next item on the public hearings tonight is another design study. This is DS two zero three seven three. This is the Black Project. It's consideration of a final design study and associated coastal development permit for the demolition of an existing one thousand one hundred and fourteen square foot, one-story, single-family residence and garage and the construction of a new, uh, one thousand five hundred and ninety square foot, two-story, single-family residence with a two hundred and ten square foot detached garage located on Camino Real two southeast of Eleventh Avenue. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So just as a reminder, the subject site is a four thousand square foot lot currently developed with a one thousand one hundred and fourteen square foot residence and garage. All improvements on the site are proposed to be demolished. And the construction of a new eighteen hundred square foot two-story residence is proposed. There is a minor change from the plans presented at the concept hearing. Uh, you might remember that there is a brief discussion regarding the inclusion of a rear-facing balcony uh, on the second story. And the adjacent neighbor to the rear, um, cited some privacy concerns. There was no direction given, however, the applicant has voluntarily removed the balcony and changed that feature into a small bay window. Other than that, no other changes to the building form occurred. The building's proposed to be finished with vertical board-on-board siding. Um, that exact color, um, has not been identified, however, it's been stated that it'll have a grayish stain. Bistelux aluminum windows are proposed throughout. That will be a coal finish. And the roof will be a black standing seam metal roof and a, um, stone veneer, uh, water tables also proposed as well as the wall sconce shown below the, um, stone sample. One item to point out is that the previous hearing, the commission cited concerns regarding that too many materials. If I flip back to this slide, um, you'll see that there is a combination of stone, vertical wood siding and horizontal wood siding. Uh, the applicant has removed the horizontal siding, so it's now just the vertical board on board with the stone water table. The applicant has submitted a landscape plan for review. Um, the forester has reviewed the landscape plan and is, uh, supportive of the general plant arrangement. However, um, the, the landscape plan does need to be revised at the forester's direction to include at least fifty percent native California plants. And that's been included as special condition of approval number twenty-nine. The applicant's also proposing a paver, um, walkway and patio. Um, the patio would be the one at the entry below the roof, as well as the uncovered patio at the rear. And then the walkways leading from the right-of-way to the site. And then the driveway would be a, uh, cowstone, Sierra granite. We have included special condition of approval number thirty and thirty-one stating that the right-of-way encroachments shall be removed. As you can see on the slide, small portions of the walkway do encroach into the public right-of-way, however, those would not be permitted. So those will be removed, um, as part of the project. So staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving final design study and associated coastal development permit for the demolition of an existing one thousand one hundred and fourteen square foot, one-story, single-family residence and garage and construction of a new two-story, one thousand five hundred and ninety square foot, two-story, single-family residence with a two hundred and ten square foot detached garage located on Camino Real two southeast of Eleventh. Um, and that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions for staff and the commissioners?
No.
Thank you, Evan. Would the applicant like to make their presentation at this time?
Yes, please.
Yeah, the applicant will have five minutes for the initial presentation and, and a three-minute rebuttal time will be allowed.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. This is Harland Bradley, Masterwork Builders, representing David and Jeannie Black, who are on with us tonight as well. Uh, thank you very much, Evan, for the presentation. And thank you, commissioners, for considering our project. We, um, had a successful hearing two months back. And we really appreciated your feedback. We took, uh, notes on what you said and some minor concerns brought by neighbors and implemented, uh, some really great changes to the plan. As Evan outlined, we simplified the finished materials. And, uh, we eliminated back balcony. That was a concern. Uh, we hope that you enjoy the selections and look forward to your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you for that very concise presentation. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the planning commission this time? I don't see any hands up. Anybody out there that, uh, wants to make a comment? Okay, hearing none. Um, I don't think the applicant needs any rebuttal time. Wasn't really any, any comments. So I will close the public hearing of the, uh, public comments this time, open it up to the commission for their comments. Uh, Commissioner Locke, would you like to begin?
Sure, um, I don't really have a lot of comments on this. I think it's a nice project. Um, appreciate that the applicant, listen to the neighbors and, um, also that the, the siding direction is all one direction at this point. And I think it's just a, I, I think it's fine and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Um, Commissioner Bolton, would you like to make some comments?
Yeah, I think the staff did a nice job on this project. I don't really think, have anything to add to it. I support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lehman?
Well, I'm gonna sound like an echo, but, um, I think, I do think it's a nice project. Um, I think it's well thought out and I think it would be a nice addition to the street.
Thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Um, Commissioner Dells?
I agree, I have nothing to add.
Thank you, Commissioner Dells. Yes, I think the applicant has did a good job of, uh, implementing the direction given to by the, uh, commission. And, um, so I think we need to make a resolution on this. We have, uh, pull up staff's resolution here. Give me one minute. So once again, uh, we will need to include in our, uh, resolution about standard condition number eight. I believe special conditions are pretty standard. Number twenty-five is excavation. Twenty-six, uh, forester supervision. Twenty-seven, tree planting. Twenty-eight is, uh, tree protection measures. So that's all the conditions. So the resolution, so, uh, do we have a resolution? I mean, uh, a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion if you'd like.
Thank you.
So, uh, I recommend approval, um, for, um, the demolition of an existing, oh, eleven hundred and fourteen square foot, one-story, single-family residence and garage and construction of a new fifteen ninety square feet, square foot, two-story, single-family residence with a two hundred and ten square foot detached garage located on Camino Real two southeast of Eleventh Avenue. And that is DS twenty dash three seven three. Has submitted the only, um, change in the conditions would be to re, um, return to the initial language of, um, condition number eight.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the res- resolution as presented by staff with one change that, uh, standard condition number eight shall be as per the previous, standard. Okay, second that motion. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair Lepage?
Yes. Motion is passed. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Okay, the next item on the public hearing agenda tonight is another design study. This is DS two zero two zero five, and it's also a, excuse me here. Got more to this motion. So the LM stands for, somebody help me on, oh, excuse me, lot merger, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so it's consideration of final design study, lot merger and associated coastal development permit for the demolition of an existing one thousand seven hundred and fifty-two square foot, one-story, single-family residence with detached garage and construction of a two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight square foot, two-story, single-family residence inclusive of a basement and attached garage located at Lincoln Five Southwest of Tenth Avenue. Have staff report, please.
Thank you once again, Chair. So the subject site is a thou- seven thousand square foot lot currently developed with a one thousand seven hundred and fifty-two square foot residence and garage. All improvements are proposed to be demolished for the construction of a two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight square foot, residence, garage and basement. The subject application also includes a lot merger, uh, to merge the one full lot of record and the two partial lots of record. At the previous hearing, there was a number of items discussed, uh, required to be changed for the final details hearing, the first being the garage door material. Um, at the last hearing, the garage door material was proposed to be aluminum, which the commission directed to change to an alternative material. The applicant has returned, um, with a steel matte musket gray, um, metal, which is the same material that's proposed for the roof. So the garage material, the garage door material and the roof material, material are proposed to be consistent throughout, instead of having a mix of roof, uh, material and then a separate aluminum garage door material. Um, at the last hearing, uh, the commission was not supportive of the gate or fence design. Um, the applicant has returned with a similar design. However, the material has changed to, uh, wood pickets. Um, and staff is supportive of the change in material. And then the last item that was discussed was the inclusion of a driveway gate. That driveway gate has been maintained in the proposal, although the design has changed to the current configuration of the, uh, wood materials. Um, staff has maintained special condition of approval number thirty-three, however, stating that the driveway gate needs to be removed, um, from the scope of the project. The residence is comprised of three green roof areas, two of which will be visible from the street. One might be located further away and may or may not be visible. It's unclear at this point. The, uh, pitch roof elements are proposed to be the steel matte musket gray roof. Again, it's the same material to match the garage door. And then the primary building, uh, will be finished with vertical wood board. And then there are elements throughout of board form concrete with a silver smoke iron oxide pigment. So the, um, the color wouldn't be the out-of-the-truck gray. It would have a little bit more detail to it. Uh, the applicant has submitted a landscape plan, um, that includes a number of site coverage details. The driveway walkways and, uh, excuse me, the driveway walkways and, um, paver areas are proposed to be limestone, uh, with gravel walkways. There's two styles of retaining walls throughout. One, a, uh, a, a stone retaining wall. And then there's also portions of the retaining walls that would be the same board form concrete. They're proposing a concrete fire pit. And then there's also a detail of the side yard and rear yard fences that are proposed, um, for the portions of the site not located at the street frontage. The applicant's also proposing three styles of landscape lighting. Those are the three at the top and then the bottom style wall sconces located at the bottom. All the fixtures comply with the design guidelines and the electrical standards for lighting output. So staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving a design study, lot merger and associated coastal development permit for the demolition of an existing one thousand seven hundred and fifty-two square foot, one-story, single-family residence with detached garage and construction of a two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight square foot, two-story, single-family residence inclusive of a basement and attached garage located at Lincoln Five Southwest of Tenth. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from, for staff from the commissioners? I don't hear any. Okay, thank you, Evan. Uh, would the applicant like to make their presentation at this time?
Yes, please. I will share my screen. Okay. Um, hi, everyone. Uh, we have a short presentation today to just address those few comments that, uh, came up last time. As a reminder, this is our building. Uh, we have a combination of the wood and concrete and the metal roof. Like Evan said, um, with the, the predominant forms of the building being the single-story gable that you see from the street and a series of flat roofs that are attached to it. And this is the view from the courtyard. The materials are just like we presented last time, the wood siding and the concrete. And we have addressed the comment from, from the city that the roof sample that we had provided before was maybe a little shiny. Um, we presented a, a gray color this time that is a little bit more matte. Uh, and we think goes well with the rest of the palette. For the fence, we have substituted the metal fence with a wood fence. Uh, we think this, this type of fence that we're proposing here at the top left is a very simple design and something that would be very minimally and, just very refined the way that it is constructed, uh, so that there's no heavy bracing. so that there's no heavy bracing or structure to it, but it, the wood and the space in between the wood is what is more predominant. The idea is that it is something that provides some privacy and enclosure, but it's still very open and allows to be able to see through so that the house is what is more visible from the street. We are still presenting the gate. This is something the client feels really strongly about, so we wanted to change the design of it and see if doing this variation would be something that would be accepted. The client would like this for several reasons, they would like to have the dogs like we talked about last time, but they do also want some security for their cars and their charging station for their electric vehicles when they're not there. So, a way that we thought that maybe this could be done in a way that is less solid even would be to do what we have on the top right image. So, following the same coursing of what we would have for a wood fence, but in a much shallower profile would allow you to see through even more because you wouldn't have any blockage in a diagonal. So, it's a way of keeping that area a little bit more open, but still providing enclosure for the clients. The layout that we're proposing is what's shown here in red.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I don't, I don't think your slideshow's changing with what you're saying.
Oh.
We just still see the cover sheet, the front elevation.
Oh, well, that's not good, okay, let me stop sharing and reshare. Do you see it changing now?
Yes, it's better.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so these are the two views. These are the materials, and the slide in the middle is that metal roof, the new color that we are proposing. So, these are the two fences, the fence on the left and then the gate on the right. So, the fence would have some depth to it, and then the gate would be that same idea, but shallower so that you are able to see through it even more. Here's a flattened elevation of that view, so you can see how it would be something that is very spaced apart and you would be able to see through it quite a bit, much more than if it was made of stone and even much more than what is there on site right now. This is the layout of the fence that we're proposing, fence and gate. So, as you can see, we are staggering the design of the fence, moving around the trees and providing a more concealed entrance or just indirect entrance to go to the front door. So, it's not one solid line of fence along the front of the house. It provides some articulation and some integration with the landscape. And then the last item is the garage door. We have given this quite a bit of thought, and we really feel like the right solution for this is to do the metal to match the roof for several reasons. One was, you know, going back to the design guidelines and having the garage door be an element that is supposed to blend in with the adjacent materials. We feel like of the materials that we have on site, the roof material is the one that would be more suitable for the garage door without us introducing something new. We have considered, you know, doing a painted wood that would be matched to the concrete. That doesn't seem like a very authentic way of doing the garage door, it would introduce a new material. It would also be the only painted element that would require maintenance and would not stay looking very attractive as long as the other materials would. We've also considered using the siding that we're using in the rest of the house. We also feel like this is not the right design solution, it would actually call a lot more attention to that garage door rather than becoming a secondary element, which is what we're trying to do with the placement of the garage door and the design of the house, having that gable be what is in the front and more predominant. So, our intent with the garage door is that it blends in with the color of the concrete as much as possible and also with the roof that is visible from the front of the house. So, that is all that we have today, I'm curious to hear what you think.
Thank you, are there any questions for the architect? I have one question. The proposed fence now is going to be four feet tall?
Yes, and it staggers with the with the elevation.
The elevation, so it follows the elevation down.
Yes.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions for the applicant? I think you're muted, Gail. Gail, you're muted.
I do have one, thank you. Are the gates electric gates?
Yes, they would be a motorized sliding gate. We, it has to be a sideways sliding gate because it can't, it can't slope, it can't swing out because of the slope of the grade because it's higher, and it can't swing in because you would hit the car there. So, it goes sideways.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment on this application? I see Michael has his hand up. And there's also one, somebody called in, Michael, you had your hand up first, you want to start?
Thank you, Chair. Just very briefly, and I know that commission members can count, but in the last two or three hours, we've simply observed three projects which all have had metal roofs. And we're just wondering if this is a theme that the planning commission, and I'm sorry that this project happens to be the catalyst for this comment, okay, right? It's unfortunately the luck of the draw, all right, but my question to the commission would simply be if, you know, amongst the design guidelines, if this kind of intensity toward metal roofs and more importantly, going back to the roof system with nine neighbors speaking out that that seems slightly troubling to us, but that's it, I don't need my three minutes. I simply wanted to add that comment, and it's not an attack on this project at all. It's simply an observation that, you know, when I think of the Carmel Residents Association and I think there's some other movement afoot with Carmel Charm, all right, to a more traditional approach to design in the city. I have some wonder, I wonder about this, thank you so much, thanks.
Thank you. Ian, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you, Commissioner LePage, and good evening, commissioners. I just wanted to call in and say how much I support this proposed project. I think that, you know, we are a village that's based on an artist community, and an important part of what constitutes art is having original ideas that speak to our time and the way that we live today. And I think this is a marvelously fresh expression that draws on some of our best, the best aspects of our design heritage, that being a traditional Carmel cottage, and yet it is clearly a statement of today, and not simply this rehashed, recycled storybook cottage from a century ago, which only serves to diminish the original examples of those houses we have here in town, so I really want to give my appreciation and respect to the architects and to the clients for adding this fantastic house to our, to our already rich architectural heritage. I think that it's really unfortunate that there is a movement afoot that's trying to limit people's ability to express themselves with the architecture and their choices, that really goes against the best aspects of our heritage, which do get back to this idea that we are an artist colony, a place that was originally envisioned for intellectuals and thinkers and creative people, and to tell people like that that they cannot fully express themselves with the places they want to live really goes against the best traditions of our village. Of course, there is such a thing of taking things too far, and that's why we have the design guidelines, but within the design guidelines, there's a lot of latitude for creativity as the Rainies and their architects have clearly demonstrated, so I'm very much looking forward to seeing this house take its place in among our already rich architectural heritage, and I'm just grateful to see such a refreshing, beautiful expression be added to our village, thank you.
Thank you, Ian. We have a caller that has their hand up, would you like to speak to the planning commission?
Hi, I think that might be me. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn here, my name's Mel, I live a couple doors down. Hello, everyone, and thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to say that I guess I'm kind of one of those people that really loves the old, original architecture, and I will miss Go Gainville, but I do like the look of the new design. My only concern about it really is that it is quite a lot larger than the original house and from our backyard, we can really see like the new two-story addition in the back where before there was just like a tiny corner of the house that we could see. And I know that there is a proposed window in that, which we were really happy to hear was only going to be for light, letting light in, but it did make me worry a little bit about possible light pollution coming out of that window at night because the house is set up so much higher than ours, because we're just like one of the really tiny original one-story houses. So, yeah, I just kind of am hoping that won't be a problem, but just wanted to bring it up at the meeting because there's an opportunity to do that. And I guess that's all I have to say, so thank you for hearing me and have a great night.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to make a a comment? I don't see any hands raised. Ms. Garal, would you like some time to rebut, you have three minutes? Or add any comments?
I would love to. Is my timer already going, I'm trying to open the drawing so I can show. Well, I'll just talk. So, the, oh, that's great, could you put it in the drawing that shows all the menu? The, keep going, the front relation, elevation overlay, that one. So, as you can see in that bottom image, there's a red dash that shows the original house, and you can see our house there, you can see that our house is not really, the proposed elevation is not really much higher than the existing house. We went through great lengths to make sure that our finished floor is actually lower than the existing finished floor because the house is raised right now. And we are doing two stories, but that second story is not, shouldn't be noticeable at all, even from the backyard, if we can see the exterior elevations. So, see, this is perfect, so in the top elevation, you can see this is the west elevation, there's only a little bit of that second floor that pops up, so the finished floor of that existing house is not really lower than the proposed elevation. We have very few windows, I believe that woman said she was to the north. I believe that we only have one window in the master bedroom, which is, oh, the, yes, the one on the bottom elevation, all the way to the right, that would be what's closest to the property line. And it's only maybe ten feet above, the top of it, the header is maybe ten feet above the ground. So, we're happy to show more sections if needed, but we did a lot of careful analysis and study to make sure we weren't impacting our neighbors because in our first design that we proposed to the city a year ago, we had a complete second floor, and that was very hard to avoid, windows that were facing neighbors, but we feel like with this design, we're being very respectful of the privacy of all our neighbors. And, you know, we're happy to provide more vegetation if needed, but we do have also quite a bit of landscape that I think will mitigate any privacy issues or lighting concerns that any neighbors might have, and I'm happy to have more conversations about that also if needed. So, the window that is the closest is on the northwest, the north elevation, west side of the project, there's a tiny little window that faces north there. And then on the west elevation, you can see how far away we are from the property line and how most of those windows are just very tall windows for light, to get light in. So, I think that's all I have to say about that.
All right, thank you. Okay, are there any further comments from the public regarding this application? I don't see any hands up. Okay, so I'm going to close the public comments, open it up to the commission for their comments. Commissioner Bolton, would you like to begin?
I think it's an exceptionally fine design. I'm very pleased with the changes that have been made, with the exception of the gate, I don't support the gate still. But I like this house very much, I think it's going to be an exceptional addition to Carmel and enhance our character. And then my last comment is regarding this roof. This is probably the best roof I've seen so far, it's incredibly flat and matte and should be a goal for all of our metal roofs to look similar. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Commissioner Locke?
I will echo that as well, I am curious to hear Gail's comments on the garage door. But, no, I think it's a beautiful design. I am okay with the garage gate, but again, I would rather not see properties being locked in and keeping neighbors out kind of thing. And I love the green roofs, and I think green roofs are such an important thing that we need to be looking at in the future. And so, no, I think it's a really interesting project.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Dells?
Yeah, I think, I love this project, I think it's just, it is a great artistic expression and architecturally significant, and I don't want to weigh in on the metal roof debate, but in this particular one, it just seems like the right roof for this project. And it's just such a thoughtful project, and I really respect and admire the fact that this could be a much bigger project because of the amount of land they have, and they really, I think they were very thoughtful of how it was sited on the lot. I think it is respectful to the community and the neighbors. It's so much better than what's there, but that's a low bar. And I like the changes to the fence, I like the changes to the gate. I can support the gate. I think that they are still allowing sight to flow through the gate, I think they want some privacy, I think they want to protect their dogs. And this house is beautiful, you don't want to hide it from the street, you want, you want to be able to see it. But I'm okay with the gate.
Thank you, Commissioner Dells, Commissioner Lehman?
Yeah, I really like the house, I don't mind the garage door now. I don't mind the garage door now. Because I think they've come up with a, with a beautiful metal and it's so matte. And it's, it's a wonderful color. And I can see, you know, the relationship between that and the roof. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not bugged with that. They do have a very large two-car garage, which certainly can protect their cars. And so I, I'm not in favor of the gate. And there's another reason I'm not in favor of the gate. I believe we were very clear with the house that Teshur is building on Casanova and 12th, that he couldn't have his garage gate, which he wanted. So I don't think, I think if we deny it to someone, we have to deny it to all. And it's been our tradition really to not have the garage gate. So I, um, I, I guess, but everything about the house is so artistic and so beautifully done. And I congratulate the architects. And so Ms. Corral, I think it's, it's great that you're here doing the work. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Yes, this is, this is a very thoughtful project. And I, I think it's going to be a really nice architectural addition, addition to our neighborhood. I like the, uh, the way that they dealt with our direction to change the fence. I think they came back with a very elegant design. It meets our guidelines. It's, it's, it's a different design, but it meets our guidelines. It's open. You know, normally I wouldn't support a gate on a driveway, but because of the way this fence is constructed, in fact, it's not over four feet high. And also the articulation where it's, it's set back and forth. So it isn't just a, a solid line of fencing going across the front of the property on one plane. I think in this situation, the, the operable gate would, would, would be, would be supported by the guidelines. And so I am in support of the project as it has been presented and with the direction and changes that the, the architect has come up with. So having said that, are there any other comments from the commission on it? We should take a look at the resolution.
Mr. Chair, as you're looking at the resolution, this will be the last one of the evening where we'll need standard condition eight to be modified back to the original language.
Okay, great. We can put that to bed. Until, until next.
Until we wake it up next time. That's correct. That's right.
Okay, let me just get this resolution up here real quick. Here it is. So I believe, scroll down here to the... Okay, so the special conditions are number 24. We have a limb removal condition. We have 25 tree marking that's prior to grading. 26 activation within six feet of a tree trunk not permitted. 27, no attachments, wires of any kind. 28 material storage. 29 tree protection zone. 30 structural root zone. 31 trees greater than two-inch diameter trim and 32 tree roots. 33 is the driveway gate. Driveway gate is a special condition to be removed. 34 is the lot merger prior tuition stability determination merger shall be recorded. And then 35 is all unpermitted encroachment shall be moved from the driveway prior to final inspection. So with that, do we have a motion to accept the resolution as written or to make any changes to special conditions?
Why don't I do this again, trying to tease out the gate, see where Stephanie is? So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution in our pack with two changes to conditions. Condition number eight being returned to the original language and the removal of condition 33, therefore allowing the gate.
Okay, we have a motion. As stated, condition number eight to be revised, to revert to original language and removal of condition number 33. Do we have a second? Sounds like we don't have a second. So the motion dies. Do we have a substitute motion?
Yeah, I can make a substitute motion. That, um, we approve of final design study, lot merger and associated coastal development permit for the demolition of an existing 1,752 square foot, one-story, single-family residence with detached garage and construction of a 2,868 square foot, two-story, single-family residence with a basement and attached garage at Lincoln 5 southwest of 10th. That's DS 20-2R5 and lot merger LM 20-290. I approve it with all the special conditions, including condition number 33, that the driveway gate be removed from the scope of work.
And that the standard condition number eight should be revised.
Revised to the, revert to the original language.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the resolution as presented by staff with the change to standard condition number eight. We have a second?
I, I can second that.
Okay, is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Sorry, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Carolyn Page?
Yes, motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. Next item, or this time, I'd like to propose we take a 10-minute recess. So we will take a 10-minute recess. We will reconvene at approximately 7:20, maybe 7:22 or something like that. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Get up and stretch.
Now, three more.
Can they hear me or see me?
They can now. Okay. All right, we will resume the meeting. Everybody got a chance to get up and stretch? Okay, the next item on the public hearing tonight is another design study. This is DS 21082. This is the Toru project. It's consideration of a concept, design study and variance for construction of a 270-square-foot, single-story addition to an existing 1,330-square-foot, single-story dwelling located at 11th Avenue. It's on 11th Avenue. I think the directions were wrong on this. Anyway, can we have staff report, please?
Mr. Chair, could I suggest that we do a roll call since we?
All right, all right. We have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Here.
Commissioner Dells?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Looks like she's waiting at her desk.
Commissioner Locke?
I'm here.
Okay. And, uh,
Chairman LePage is here. Yeah, I think we're missing Commissioner Lehman.
Chairman LePage? It looks like I may need to drop within the next half hour, as we talked about before.
Okay.
So I, I may just disappear.
That's okay. You can just leave the meeting. Thank you for letting me know.
Is Commissioner Locke with us?
Yes, she, she answered.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
We'll give Commissioner Lehman a couple of minutes here.
There she is.
There she is.
Hey, Commissioner Lehman? She's back.
Yes.
Here I am.
Okay, let it, for the record, all the commissioners are present. Okay, we are, our next item on our agenda tonight, the public hearings, is design study 21082, Toru project, consideration of a concept, design study and variance for the construction of a 270-square-foot, single-story addition to an existing 1,330-square-foot, single-story dwelling located at 11th Avenue. Okay, have staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair LePage. So the... Sorry, bear with me just a moment. So the, the project before you this evening is a 1913 cottage. It's approximately 1,300 square feet and it has an existing parking pad in the front setback. So the applicant is proposing a 270-square-foot addition at the back of the house. The project also includes an interior remodel, the addition of a third bathroom, replacement of the majority of the windows and removal of the existing skylights and installation of new skylights in new locations. So the project is consistent with the residential design guidelines. It meets all setbacks, height... height, floor area requirements. Fairly straightforward project, however, the municipal code does require a minimum 10 foot by 20 foot area for onsite parking. And while detached garages and carports are allowed in the front setback, parking pads are not. Additionally, the code says that sites with non-conforming parking are not allowed to add floor area. So as a result, the applicant is seeking a variance to modify the required parking dimensions and also allow the existing parking pad to remain in the front setback. So when considering the granting of a variance, the, there are very specific findings that the commission needs to make. Staff's gonna kind of go through and talk about some facts that we believe support the variance findings and support approval of granting the variance. So again, this is a 1913 cottage. When it was constructed, it did not have a garage. The lot is also somewhat unique in that it's considered a re-subdivided corner lot, which means it's 50 feet wide by 80 feet deep, and it has a 10 foot front yard setback. Additionally, there's insufficient space within the front yard for the owners to build a detached garage or carport to meet current code requirements for parking without having to remove a portion of the, the existing house, which their intent is to retain. So the parking pad that's currently located in the front setback is eight and a half feet wide by 20 feet deep. Typical full-size parking space is nine feet wide, and the compact space is eight and a half feet wide. And I say this only because the area available for parking provides sufficient space for off-street parking, even though it doesn't meet the code requirements of being 10 by 20. Also, I just wanted to note that there is an additional seven feet between the front property line and the edge of pavement, which just gives a little bit more room for parking and maneuvering. This also is a continued use of an existing condition. So this is an existing parking pad. The owners have no plans to, to change or replace it. They simply want to add on a little bit of square footage at the rear of the house. And so they're seeking the, the variance in order to achieve that. Staff did not identify any safety issues with the existing parking pad. And the granting of the variance would essentially legalize an existing condition while preserving the character of the 1913 cottage. So with that, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission accept the concept design study as well as the variance for a 270 square foot addition. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for staff from the commission?
I have one question.
Mr. Locke?
Marty, were there comments made by neighbors regarding the approval of the variance?
No, we did not receive any public comment on this project.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff from the commissioners? Very none. Okay, thank you, Marty. Okay, would the applicant like to address the planning commission regarding this application? And as I said before, you'll have five minutes for your presentation, and if you need rebuttal time, be three minutes.
Hello, planning commission. This is Adam Jeselnik, architect. So thank you to staff. Marty and I have worked fairly closely together on this project since submitting the plans. Earlier this year, my clients are purchased the home about three years ago and worked with the city to restore some of the landscape in the front and backyards. And with this project, the primary goal is to create another bedroom and, and to create a, a modern kitchen. Correct? Kitchen is located in the small addition that you saw at the back of the house, and really isn't sufficient for, for full-time living. So basically, as Marty described, the, the project is fully in conformance with all of the Carmel zoning regulations and with the design guidelines. As you saw, or were able to see onsite this afternoon, we're, we're completely maintaining the existing historic character of the home from the street elevation. My clients really appreciate and enjoy that architecture. So really, the only visible change to the front of the home will be a change from asphalt shingle roof to, to a wood shake roof. The additions are below the height of the existing roof, so they will not be visible from the street. And all the skylights that are being proposed to bring more natural light into the house are facing north, again, opposite the street. In addition to the, the additions to the home, we are proposing to continue with the existing materials that are used. So wood horizontal siding, wood windows, and with the wood shake roof that I mentioned. And just two things to highlight from the staff report. One is there's a description of an existing cypress tree. It's actually an existing oak tree in the rear yard that was planted as part of their landscape plans. So we will be maintaining that tree, and we will be meeting with all of the city foresters' guidelines for separation from the existing trees, as well as the replanting requirements. And then the second thing to point out is just, you know, in terms of the door and window openings proposed for the house, we are proposing some new windows on both the east and west elevations. However, those windows were planned to be sensitive to the location of the neighbor's home on both sides. And so we don't believe that any privacy impacts are created by those windows. Essentially, the goal is just to bring as much light into the house as possible. And the last comment would just be in terms of Marty's description of the variance. I think it's accurate to describe the existing parking as just being maintained as is. That space is currently used for parking a car. The owners would just like to continue that in its current configuration. And there really isn't another suitable location to, to park a car. So we are hopeful that you'll see this variance not as any type of special privilege, but as something that's unique to this particular lot, which has unique dimensions and to the existing original home that we're hoping to maintain. And with that, I will certainly welcome any questions you have about the project and look forward to your support. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Adam? Commissioners? Okay, I don't hear any. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comments to the planning commission regarding this application?
Just as a reminder for anyone, the bottom left-hand corner of your screen is your mute and unmute button. If you move your cursor down there, and if you'd like to raise your hand, there's a button down there towards the center that says reactions. If you click on that, that'll give you the opportunity to raise your hand. If you're only on your phone, which it doesn't look like we have anyone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine and star six will unmute your device.
Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hand or chiming in, so... And I don't think Adam, Adam needs any rebuttal time. No comments. So I will close the public comments, open up to the commissioners for their comments. Commissioner Dellis, would you like to begin?
Sure. Kudos to the owner and the architect for preserving a gem of a cottage and, you know, bringing, bringing it up to date inside while protecting the exterior, from what I can tell completely. And, and for not putting a metal roof on it, in this case. And I, I think the only, you know, the, the question is, do we grant the variance for the parking? Again, I lack, you know, the years of history my colleagues do on this type of thing. But I think when this house was built, there was a Model, Model T parked out front. I'm fine with continuing that parking pad. I don't think a garage would be fitting, and a carport might, you know, dilute the whole thing. So given the options, I would be supportive of the variance.
Thank you, Commissioner Dellis. Commissioner Lehman? God, you're muted. Gail?
Um, my apologies. I, I'm in support of the variance as well. I think it's nice that this house is being re-brought back up to the 21st century, so that it will be safer and probably have some insulation and some nice new windows. And, but I, I don't have any objection of them keeping their parking pad on the side of the house. It seems preferable to parking cars on the street. So it gets them off the street. And if they have small cars and they, you know, they don't mind the width of this a little bit narrower than a typical single car garage, that would be just fine with me. So I'm all for it. I think Adam did a nice job of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Commissioner Locke?
I have no problem with this whatsoever. And in fact, I just want to say that when it was for sale in 2017, I really wish I could have purchased it because this is probably one of my favorite houses in Carmel, and I'm really happy that the outside's not going to change. And I think that the parking pad area is just perfectly appropriate. Adam, nice job on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Bolton?
Thank you. I also agree with my fellow commissioners. I think this is an extremely cute little house, and it would be a real shame to change anything about it on the street elevation. I think the proposed changes are fine. The house has clearly been modified over the years and is not historic, although the street presentation is adorable. And I appreciate the fact that the owners didn't want to change it or tear it down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. I'm in complete agreement with everybody's comments. The staff has done a good job of providing the findings to support the variance. And I commend the owners for maintaining this cottage. It, it really has a lot of charm and street appeal, which you heard confirmed tonight by all the commissioners. So having said that, let's get the resolution up here.
Mr. Chair, if I can make one comment while you're doing that, I promise it's not about standard condition number eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to make it clear for the, the commission that you're not approving the variance tonight, just as we talked earlier in the day about what the concept hearings are for. You're, you're approving the concept. You're not making any final decisions on the project. Staff brought the variance along with this because it does speak to how the house is designed. So we thought it was appropriate to discuss it, and we wanted to share our thoughts with the findings for that variance, but you're not approving the variance or the project. But I just wanted to make sure that was clear in the motion.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We need as much clarity as we can get. Okay, so we have a resolution from staff with some draft conditions, which are pretty basic. Number one is tree planting. Number two is tree protection. And three are skylights. You have, it shall select low profile skylight equipped with automatic solar shades and submit manufacturer specifications, so.
I will move. Adopt the resolution, accepting the concept design study for a 270, 270 square foot addition. DS 21-082 Toro. This is on 11th Avenue to northwest of Dolores Street. And again, approve the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second that.
All right, we have a motion to accept, to accept the resolution with draft conditions as per staff. Is there any more discussion?
No.
There is no discussion. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dellz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LePage?
Yes, the motion is carried. Thank you. We'll see you at final.
Thank you all.
Okay, the next item in public hearings tonight is design study 20339 Takazawa project. Consideration of a concept design study for construction of 107, 177 square foot, single story addition to an existing 1,328 square foot, single story dwelling and a 210 square foot detached garage located on Casanova Street four southeast of 9th Avenue. Can we have staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair LePage. So the project before you is the historic Artie Bowen House. This is a 1906, one-story bungalow in the craftsman style. It's known as the Artie Bowen House. It's about 1,100 square feet in size and has an attached garage that's been converted to a laundry room and storage area. So this home was added to the historic inventory in 2007. Some of the modifications that have occurred over the years include the addition of the porch in 1924, which has become part of the historic fabric of a house. The garage was added in 1935. And then there's some additions at the rear, 1977, 1987. So kind of a lot going on at the back of the house, but the front has really been preserved quite well. Let's see. So the applicant's proposing 177 square foot addition at the rear of the house and in a portion of the existing courtyard. This is a single story addition to a single story house, not visible from the public way. Again, another project that meets all the setbacks, height, floor area requirements. The project also includes an interior remodel and a replacement of all windows, except for one window on the front elevation, which is an original window and part of the historic character. And then there's some associated site improvements as well. So just want to highlight for you some of the real character defining features of the house that will remain intact in order to preserve its historic integrity. So that includes the, the shed roof, not shed. Oh, the words are sweeping me hip, sorry. The hip roof form is a character defining feature, as well as the shingle siding. The front porch, as I mentioned, is also a character defining feature. This is the historic window. So this is an original window with the original glass that will be preserved and protected. This is an original window opening. However, the window itself is not original, so that is proposed to be replaced. So all of these modifications, the scope of the project was presented to the Historic Resources Board, who did find it consistent with the Secretary Standards, meaning that the modifications that are proposed will not damage the historic resource. And lastly, the attached garage, which is the current laundry room, the ceiling height will be raised to make this more functional living space for the owners. So again, shingle siding is historic and part of the historic fabric and will be preserved. And there are conditions of approval that will be carried over from the Historic Resources Board to that effect. This again is another historic window opening, but the window itself is not historic, so that window is proposed to be replaced. So I think the more significant aspect of this So I think the more significant aspect of this project really is the addition of a detached garage at the front of the property. It's 210 square feet. It is setback 15 feet from the front property line, so it's outside of the required setback. However, it does encroach into the side setback. So it's proposed at 1 foot 8 inches, where typically 3 feet is required. The code does allow the Planning Commission to allow such encroachments. And we'll talk about that in maybe in just a minute. The detached garage is 11 feet in height, has a front facing gable roof with a 4 and 12 pitch, which is the same pitch that is on the historic cottage. So this shows the front elevation with the the proposed detached garage. You can see that it will shield the majority of that garage addition to the house, which is not part of the historic fabric. So no impact there. This is the north elevation of the detached garage. You can see the 11-foot height, the highest point is facing the street. And the south elevation, which is within the side yard setback. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission accept the Concept Design Study for 177 square foot addition as well as the 210 square foot detached garage. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff from the commissioners? Okay, thank you, Marnie. Would the applicant like to make their presentation to the commission at this time?
Hello again, commissioners. Adam Jeselnik, architect here for Takazawa Project. Thank you, Marnie, for the staff report. So this was a house that previously came before the commission a number of years ago. My clients are the new owners. We worked very closely with Marnie and with the historic consultant to come up with a plan that was in keeping with all of the historic guidelines for the house while meeting the client's objectives for for this project. Again, essentially keeping, completely keeping the historic character defining elements as seen from the front elevation. The porch, the original window, all of the existing window and door openings and the roof. So all of the additions in the back of the house will be subordinate to that front elevation. And then, you know, noticing, of course, that the current the current shed addition at the front of the house is not suitable for for modern cars. So creating a new garage in the front yard, out of the front yard setback, but still in the side yard setback as a detached element, which again would be subordinate to the original cottage with materials that are in keeping with that historic character. Basically, the house will, again, will distinguish the new additions from the historic cottage by changing the materials. We do intend to use wood windows in all of the original historic fabric and then aluminum clad wood windows for the additions at the back. And other than that, I don't really have any other anything else to add to Marnie's presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for Adam from the commissioners? Okay, I don't see any. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the planning commission on this application at this time? I don't see any hands going up. Nobody chiming in. Okay, I will close the public comments, open it up to the commission for their comments. Commissioner Lehman, if you'd like to begin?
Sure. I, you know, I like this. I I think, again, it's just the sweetest little house. And it reminds me of a board back that I owned for about 10 years. And it's, it's just, it's, it's just sweet. I mean, there's, it's cute as anything. The back with the doors into the, the outside doors from the, I, what we guess are the bedrooms, the existing bedrooms, and I I think refurbishing it will be lovely. And I think, once again, Adam's done a really nice job with this, so I'm, I'm real happy with it. So that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Commissioner Locke?
I agree with Commissioner Lehman. I don't really have anything to add to it. I'm, I love seeing these little projects. Just make it more modern inside and keep it looking gorgeous on the outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Mr. Bolton?
I support this project. I think it adds some needed space to the back of the house. And I think it's preserving the important part, the front. I don't object to the garage and I appreciate the fact that this house is being preserved also. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Commissioner Dels?
Nothing to add other than to say thank you to our colleagues on the Historic Preservation Committee and all that that they did because they they look at this window by window to make sure that we're not violating the the historical nature of this really pretty little cottage. So I'm, I'm good.
Thank you, Commissioner Dels. Yeah, this is a beautiful cottage and it's just a perfect example of what we want to preserve in our village. So Adam's done a great treatment of it and staff's done a nice review. So let's take a look at the resolution. And see if we can get a motion here. Okay. Okay, the draft conditions are number one, tree evaluation, tree protection. Number two, cottage window, the cottage window on the front elevation, south side of the front door shall be retained in its entirety. Number three is the bay window, bay window on the front elevation, north side of the front door shall retain the size, shape and manner of the existing opening window. May be replaced with a wood frame case window as per HRB. For north elevation window, north elevation window within the 1906 portion of the cottage shall retain size, shape and manner of the existing opening. Windows shall be replaced with wood frame case windows as per HRB. Shingle siding, siding, 1906 portions shall be preserved, protected. Damaged shingles shall be repaired, preserved. If damage is beyond repair, shall be documented, photographed with evidence and submitted to the Community Planning and Building Department along with in-kind replacement approval. And number six, character defining features, all character defining features defined in the April 9, 2001 addendum to Phase 2 report for the Artie Bowen House prepared by qualified Mark, professional Margaret Clovis shall be protected and preserved. So do we have a motion to accept the the resolution as presented by staff or any changes that commissioners would like to make?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution prepared by staff without modification.
Second?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the resolution as presented by staff with no changes. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing now, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dels?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you all. Hope to see you again next month.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, we made it to the last item on our public hearing tonight. This is a use permit. It is UP 21-105. This is the Carmel Academy of Pampered Animals. It's consideration of a use permit for the establishment of a dog daycare facility, kennel located on Mission 2, northeast of 8th Avenue in the existing 387 square foot commercial building and the residential and limited commercial, the RC zoning. Can we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. So the subject site is located on Mission 2, northwest of 8th in the Residential Unlimited Commercial Zoning District. The building is the former site of the Carmel Academy of Performing Arts. Because the subject location is located in the RC zoning district, conditional use permit is required to be issued. The purpose of the use permit is to ensure that the business, business is appropriately located and operated. The use permit also allows for conditions to be placed on the project to ensure public health, safety, peace and welfare are maintained. And the use permit also allows for the city to monitor the use and verify that it is operating with the terms of the use permit. So a kennel is defined in the municipal code as a facility for keeping, boarding, training, breeding or maintaining for commercial gain four or more dogs, cats or other household pets not owned by the kennel operator. While the municipal code does not have a definition for doggy daycare, it would in fact meet the definition of a kennel. So while the photo on the left is what one typically may think of when they hear kennel, the the photo on the right is more illustrative of what is actually being proposed. They're open play areas with no cages or or enclosures where the dogs would be isolated in their own area like the photo on the left. So while, again, we're calling it a kennel, it is just because the municipal code land use definitions, when really it's, it's more illustrative of the photo on the right. So the proposed hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM and Friday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The, the business would be broken into four, I'm sorry, three main areas. The main play area A is the largest of the rooms. That would be the space for active dogs where they can run around and play inside. And this space can also be divided into smaller areas using the play pens that you see to the right of the photo. Playroom B is the smaller or the middle sized room. And that's considered the quiet room. It would have things like couches, beds, chairs, et cetera, and can also be divided into smaller areas with those play pens as shown on the last slide. If it's needed to be divided into the smaller areas or dogs need to be further isolated. Room C is the smallest room. This is the training room. They're also proposing to have things like dog yoga, therapy sessions and dog birthday parties. And then the lobby area is also proposed to have a small retail component. So for animal uses, there are a few municipal code sections that speak directly to this. This is not an office or a veterinary service, so standard one doesn't apply. There's no boarding proposed, so there's no overnight boarding. And then standard three, which is applicable to this project. All animals in the custody of the business must be kept within the building approved for such use and constructed to control properly sound and odor connected with the keeping of animals. So any animal, dogs in this instance, to be under the care of this business would need to be kept inside the business at all times. The only time dogs would be on outdoors is when the dog owner is bringing their dog to or from the site. The applicant has submitted an odor control plan. They are proposing to contract with a local business called Coyote Scoop. They specialize in pet waste and removal services. There'll be a number of indoor relief stations throughout the interior of the business where the dogs are, will be kept. And then we have special conditions of approval, number 10, 14 through 16 and number 24, which speak to odor control, both indoor and outside of the business. The applicants also submitted a soundproofing plan. There are a few municipal code sections that speak directly to this. The first one being the section I I previously discussed regarding the building being able to maintain all sound. And then the second, which is specific to businesses located in the RC, which sets a specific decibel level. The applicant has worked with IAMP Pro Audio. They're a local business to to do an initial noise study to get some baseline readings. And then they're also contracting with a business called Soundproof Cow regarding their soundproofing to further insulate the building. Those include things like installing acoustical panels throughout, baffles throughout, and then sealing all the windows and doors. In addition to the soundproofing, the business also has a hoping, or they they're going to, you know, excuse me. They they have policies in place to maintain the sound at an appropriate level. The first being correction levels applied to dogs that are are misbehaving. There's various steps that are used and, you know, if a dog cannot keep their their barks down, they ultimately will be dismissed from the business and not allowed back. Another thing that they're proposing to do is continual, continuous monitoring of the noise levels throughout. They're proposing to install noise monitors that will give live feedback regarding the noise levels inside the business. We have special conditions of approval 10 and 12 and 13, which speak directly to soundproofing the business. In regard to traffic impacts, staff does not anticipate increased traffic or parking impacts compared to the former dance studio use. There's no increase in parking demand between the two uses. The municipal code has the same exact parking ratio for the two uses. And in fact, staff thinks that the proposed dog daycare use will be less impactful to the surrounding areas. When the former business was a dance studio, you had dance classes going on throughout the day with groups of kids being picked up and dropped off at the exact same time. However, with the dog daycare use, because there are not set times, people can come and go as they please and the traffic would be more evenly spread out throughout the day, similar to a retail establishment versus, again, the dance studio that had set class times. There are a number of 30-minute parking spots in the immediate vicinity of the business that can be utilized. Those have been identified with the green stars. Hopefully those aren't too hard to see, as well as parking at the Sunset Center, which is effectively kitty corner from the proposed business. So staff does maintain concern regarding the proposed noise and odor from the business. And as such, we are recommending effectively a trial period for the business. We are recommending that the applicant return to the Planning Commission three months after opening. So the Planning Commission can evaluate and reconsider the application and introduce any new conditions that that may need to be applied. Staff is concerned about the existing proposed capacity of the animals. While there is no local or national standard for dog capacity in these shared play areas, the ASPCA does have a recommendation of 75 to 100 square feet per dog. And staff's recommendation is 100 square feet per dog for this initial three-month trial. And just to clarify, it's not a building capacity of 100 square feet per dog. So that would be not based off the total building square footage, but based off the square footage of each playroom. And then we've also included special conditions of approval, a handful of them. Special conditions number eight through 25, which speak directly to this trial period, odor and noise control, as well as animal safety and well-being. So staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for the establishment of a dog daycare facility located on Mission 2, northeast of 8th Avenue in an existing 3,087 square foot commercial building in the Residential Unlimited Commercial Zoning District. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff from the commissioners? Okay, I don't hear any. Would the applicant like to make their presentation at this time?
Yes, I would.
You'll have five minutes to make your initial presentation and a three-minute rebuttal period.
Okay. Am I muted? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, so I'm gonna share my screen real quick. Hi, my name is Kelly Hoffmeister. I'm one of the partners for Carmel Academy of Pampered Animals. And I'm going to begin my presentation. So we are Kappa. We are keeping the name that is consistent with Carmel Academy of Performing Arts, and we are using that acronym for Carmel Academy of Pampered Animals. And we are keeping the peace in the neighborhood. The partners, which are a trio of talent, consists of Carol Richmond, the owner of Carmel Academy of Performing Arts, Kelly Hoffmeister, business executive and entrepreneur, owner of a B. Two. B. Marketing Agency, and Nicole Brian Stevens, who's an extraordinary set artist and design, boasting the names of working for Disney, as well as Carol and Alan Richmond's nonprofit charity called Dance Kids, which performed at the Nutcracker for the last twenty-six years at Sunset. Eighth and Mission, an iconic building. It was built in nineteen fifty-four as a dance studio, featuring adobe brick walls with continuous operation as a dance studio until July of twenty twenty. We need a plan. Covid shut down the studio after thirty-one years. Commercial space for lease is abundant and demand is zero. Dance studios are in shutdown. Instructors have learned to operate independently on Zoom. We have a unique floor plan and existing building structure. Life has changed. What can we do? With very little internal and external change to Carol's charming building and former dance academy, the doggy daycare is ideally suited for this space. I want to also note that we have had the building up for lease or for sale or for whatever opportunities would come our way since July of twenty twenty with three inquiries. So now we have Lola's Place. Lola is Carol's standard poodle that has gone and passed over to the to the other side, and we are now calling this operation Gone to the Dogs, based off of Lola, who came from NorCal Rescue and was a regular participant of Oodles of Poodles, which is coming back this year, and it's going to be bigger than ever. So we have a simple business plan. Our mission is to provide a safe, happy, and healthy environment for our resident and visitor four-legged guests centrally located to everything in Carmel. The business of having a doggy daycare is sustainable. It is good for Carmel. Dogs bring parents. The business is Carmel and provides a much-needed outlet to support our other businesses with care for our furry V. I. P. guests. The local residential community supports the concept. The business community sees Kappa, AKA Lola's Place, as essential service to their customers. The pros, or follow me to Lola's, is local rescues and pet adoption centers see Lola's as a safe place for newly separated pets whose parents may have to go back to work outside the home, which we have learned is becoming a crisis because pet adoption was so big during Covid. Now we have an abundance of pets on their own. We are adding to the economy by hiring, by the hiring of contractors, handlers, and local artists. Everything is uniquely Carmel, right down to our very own Carmel by the Sea Dog Biscuit. We are a success story of a business and building reinventing itself to meet the charm and personality of Carmel. The concerns. Being a good neighbor in the community are not just words only. We back these words with actions. So let's talk about this. I'd like to ask Carol if she'd like to make a comment.
I would, Kelly. Thank you. And thank you to the chair and commissioners and staff for your consideration. As Kelly mentioned, after thirty-one years, the dance studio closed, and throughout that time, we've been respectful of our neighbors' concerns and have worked with them for noise abatement with with the music levels of the of the studio, and it's important for me to say that that's first and foremost, that we intend to be good neighbors, and we thank you again for your consideration and the time that it's taken for you to look at our plan.
So our commitment is keeping peace in the neighborhood. How are we going to do this? Well, we have experts on the team for mitigating noise, odor, and traffic. This isn't just a bunch of three ladies, a trio of talent, wanting to do a dog daycare in Carmel. This is about business. It's about revitalizing this building, and it's about using experts to make sure that we have the right information and we execute as planned. We have a good plan to reduce decibels below acceptable levels, according to the Carmel Noise Survey. In fact, it's been noted that the least annoying noise, if at all, is animal sounds, whereas trucks and buses and the traffic that comes down off of Eighth heading to our entertainment center is the most annoying, along with garbage trucks. We have a good plan to contain our waste and manage odor with our professional contracted services, who is also a dog behavioralist and has been doing this work for over forty years. We have a good plan to manage pickup and drop off with similar procedures that were used during Covid. So as a dance studio, we had to deal with the six-foot rule. We had to deal with having children come in one room and be isolated to another and move to another. Matter of fact, we were first to do that when we went into shelter in place and were zooming on May thirteenth with those procedures in place.
Sorry to interrupt, but your five minutes are over, so if you can wrap this up, we appreciate it.
Certainly. So to conclude, we're going to have continuous in-room monitoring with technology. We're going to be accountable to the community, transparent with open records. We're going to have best communication. We believe our plan has legs, and we can do this together to be the most, the number one most dog-friendly town in America, and all uniquely Carmel, supporting local businesses, artists, and our most beloved family members. So follow us to Lola's, because we are good for Carmel, the community, and the residents, and lastly, business. We are here to serve our community and the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, do we have some other members of the public that would like to make some comments regarding this? Do you have any hands? You want to put your hands up or unmute? Okay, Don Blahoviac. I hope I'm not butchering that name. Don, would you like to make your comments?
I would. Thank you.
Can you see me, hear me? I'm Susan.
We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Okay. I just wanted to show you something because it's just about dark and it's just about eight o'clock, and we've been connected since four o'clock. We live right across from the dance studio on the second floor. We enjoyed the dance company and but are not looking forward to the kennel across the street. And despite what Kelly said about input from the community, we've lived here a few years now. We've had no outreach about sounds from the ballet company or for the proposed dog, with the exception of the planning commission's request for our input.
And speaking of input, I would like to note that while Ms. Hoffmeister said that there was support from the business community locally, if you look at the comments that were submitted, ours included, you will see comments from the business community, hoteliers, restaurateurs, local business people, local residents, who all oppose this proposal, and I suspect will not be fond of the staff recommendations. The only supporting comments came from people who know and like the owners, the proprietors, which I think is a wonderful thing. I hope people would speak highly of me if I asked them to write a letter in support of my next business idea. But that's not really representative of the business community or the hotels, or the restaurants, or the local residents. So I think if we were looking at an equivalency, we really should be clear about who's supporting and who's opposing. The people who are going to be most affected by this proposal are opposing. And as to the staff recommendations, I'd like to thank the staff for the work they did, but I have serious reservations about those noise regulations, even the special conditions, one of which is requiring the noise violation to last for fifteen minutes. And while Ms. Hoffmeister said we all like noises that come from animals, yes, if there are loons on the lake, I'm sure that's true, but barking dogs would not count as one of those noises that we like. In fact, noise is a pejorative. Sounds is what we are talking about here. And if you're going to register decibels, you don't do it in fifteen-minute whole chunks. Dogs bark, and they bark for a few minutes, and then they're quiet, and they bark again. What dog barks for a sustained fifteen minutes? So that requirement of requiring a violation to count as a violation has to go for fifteen minutes? I'd really ask you to take another look at that. And I'd also ask, who's going to enforce that? Who's going to measure that? Who's going to come out with their audiometer and measure for violations or compliance? Really curious about that.
We love dogs. We've been dog owners our whole married life, and we don't have one right now because he passed away a couple of years ago. We do, although we're excited and emotional about this proposal, we do wish you well in finding a kennel. This is not the right location. People live here, right across the street, fifty feet away from up to seventy-five barking dogs. Not a viable option. Not the serenity and peacefulness that Carmel suggests and invites for residents. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I lost my, I lost my internet connection there for a minute. Did, did Don have his chance to finish up his comments?
They did, Mr. Chair. Looks like next you have Jim and Catherine with their hand.
Okay, all right, Jim and Catherine, go ahead.
All of you, we want to, first of all, thank Carol Richmond. We've had a wonderful relationship with her and her late husband, Alan. And the dance studio has been one of Carmel's high cultural contributions. We greatly miss it. We've interacted with a lot of the parents of the young dancers and some more. But to compare that, including the noise, is absolutely ridiculous. Pardon me for being so direct. It'll be going on right from eight A M. to eight P. M., except Fridays and Saturdays, eight A M. to nine P. M., unpredictable. When they're going to be left off, when they, new dogs meet others, or people passing the street, there'll be barking going on continually. We happen to live in the single-family house just north of this property.
A pink house.
The pink house, as Catherine says. And I want to just share some of the many letters of opposition, very forceful opposition to this by people in the area.
That our house would be directly affected.
Yeah, we're right, we're right, we're right next door. Okay, this is from Mark Watson, who manages the Wayside Inn and the Carriage House Inn, a little further away than we are. "We operate two ends and oppose establishing a dog kennel here. We have serious concerns for the potential noise naturally associated with a dog kennel. And even if it were totally blocked out interior, it's the in-and-out traffic morning through night, seven days a week, is by far the biggest concern about noise. We would like, we would find it likely disruptive, not only to our end guests and other ends nearby, but also to our residential neighbors. Additionally, traffic is already precarious and so forth. In fact, I would suggest it could even create undue hazards in safety and welfare of drivers, pedestrians, and dogs. In order to preserve the neighborhood and the charming atmosphere we have in our little corner of Carmel by the Sea, on behalf of our owners, guests, and employees, I strongly urge the planning commission not to approve this particular lease in our location." Another very long letter comes from, excuse me, Mr. Rod Goya. He and his wife Donna own the Heather Glenn Court Apartments, which are across the street. And he goes on in great detail, and he strongly opposes it. Residents in his building, who he's in touch with, say the same thing. It would really make their life more difficult. There's a letter from Judy Profeta.
Your time's up, Jim. I think most of those letters, they were submitted to the planning commission?
Yes, including the one from, excuse me.
Do you want me to do that?
From Judy Profeta about the lowering of land values. And finally, I want to just, I'm sorry I'm taking more time. But, you know, we have five generations of Catherine's family in this house. We, in next month, for the planning commission, would have a site assessment of our new house. Do we preserve the character of our ninety-three-year-old present home? But we'd almost surely have to abandon this and sell the lot for a lot less than its value would be without the kennel. And that's, every one of these letters shows how strongly they are afraid of the lowering of land values if they try to make sales. And then I'd just like Carmel by the Sea, quote, "Primarily, essentially, and predominantly, a residential community." I can't think of a situation which more puts that at odds. And are these words really meaningful? Or are they not really what people who make decisions are going to take as seriously as we feel they should and we've relied on through all these years? I better stop now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim and Catherine. Appreciate your comments.
Please.
Okay, do we have any other members of the public that want to address the planning commission regarding this application? I don't see any hands raised.
Reminder for anybody who's maybe trying to raise their hand, bottom left-hand corner of your Zoom screen, if you move your mouse down there, you can click on.
I hear, I hear somebody there.
Yeah, let me, let me just, just so everyone else. Yeah, thanks. And then if you want to unmute yourself, the buttons at the bottom left-hand screen, reactions, there's a smiley face towards the middle of the screen. You can click on that, and there's an option to raise hand. And if you're on a phone, star nine will raise your hand, and star six will unmute you. Mr. Chair, I do believe we had one person that raised their hand.
Okay, I don't, let's see, who's that?
Michael Stevens.
It says Michael Stevens, but it's actually Nicole.
All right, go ahead.
So I'm also one of the business partners, but I'm also a longtime resident of Carmel, California. I moved here in nineteen seventy-eight, and I've had dogs all my life. I've never seen more dogs in this community than now. It seems like every single year, there's a huge, a much larger percentage of dogs that have moved into the community. And on top of that, especially since Covid, people are bringing more and more dogs with them when they travel. And the sad thing is that when people travel and they come to a community and they can't necessarily bring their dog everywhere, then they get left in hotel rooms, they get left in cars, they get tied to trees. And then where's the safety hazard? That's more of a safety hazard. So I've worked with Carol for over twenty-seven years. So I know her extremely well. Kelly and I have worked together for over three years now. And we've come up with a plan that takes, that that, I'm so sorry. I have a form of dyslexia, so I don't always remember the words. We've taken a great, a great deal of trouble to take care of the situations for lighting, temperature, waste removal, sound issues, and making sure that the dogs are cared for and getting a trainer to come in to help us. We've done, we're going above and beyond probably what most people do to make sure that the neighbors are not affected by the situation. And on top of it, dogs are an incredible part of our world, and they're a big a part of our family. This is Max. He spent the day over there and was totally quiet. Not all dogs bark. Dogs don't bark all the time. They bark when there's an issue going on. So for people to think that there's just going to be barking dogs all day long is also not fair because it's not true. We've, Kelly today visited. today visited a center, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of it, that has no dog, no dog bark policy, which we're also going to instill. So hopefully, we shouldn't have any of those issues. Of course, there will be a dog bark once in a while. You can't stop that. But when you're walking on the street, when you listen outside, I hear dogs all day long. You can't stop dogs from barking, and you shouldn't be able to not have them as part of your family and be able to take care of them. I'm actually super surprised that Carmel hasn't had a facility before now. And then we are also in a commercial residential area. It is not just residential. Our building does both, commercial and residential. So you have to weigh both sides of that. And that's what I would really appreciate you all thinking about. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other members of the public who would like to address the planning commission? I see a hand up here, 127. Was that the one that just spoke?
No, Mr. Chair, I believe that is a new hand. The phone number ending in 127, if you'd like to unmute yourself by hitting star six, you can speak.
There we are.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Stacy Mahin, and I am calling in to the meeting tonight in support of the doggy daycare. I think it's an incredible opportunity for Carmel and one that I'm actually quite shocked that there is not currently a business like this in the Carmel area. There is one in Monterey that I've actually used myself with my dogs. I've, I'm also a dog owner, dog lover, and have had situations where I've had to take my dog to a doggy daycare for the day, not an overnight, but just, you know, for, for the day. And it's an incredible opportunity. And like Nicole who just said, and I will, will say that I do know Nicole, I do know Carol, I don't know Kelly, but it's a great opportunity and it's a great business. When I personally have had to use the doggy daycare, there are very specific rules and things that I've had to sign when I've left my dog, like the no barking, no aggression. So there's things that obviously this business is going to put in place to, to make sure that their business is fail-safe, that it's safe. I also had kids that, my daughter was a dancer at Kappa for a short time, and it was, it's a stand-up facility. It's, it's perfect where the location is in terms of the doggy daycare because it's up on that hill, it's not near the beginning of the, the nearest street. So it's, it's really secluded in terms of, I mean, it is going to have sound, it sounds like they're putting in sound barriers, what I don't know what you call them, but I don't see how that's going to be an issue. And lowering land values, I mean, I, I respect the opinions of people with that, but has there been any kind of, has there been anything to suggest that whatsoever? I just, to me, it seems like a huge opportunity for especially tourists that come in, but people like me who live in Carmel, who have situations where I just want my dog to be somewhere for the day, if I'm having my house cleaned, and I want the dog to be just somewhere safe for the day. I love the fact that they're somewhere close by, that I don't have to drive my, my dog all the way to Monterey. Tourists that come in, I've had so many people who want to come and they visit, but then they want to go to the aquarium for the day, and they can't because they brought their dog and they can't go to these other places. Even in downtown Carmel, you can't take your dog into a lot of established businesses. So like Nicole mentioned, you get these people who come in, and now what do they do with their dog? They leave it in the hotel, or they leave it outside. And that's more of a safety hazard and an issue, in my opinion. And I just think it's a great opportunity. I think that the, that the planning, whoever has put it together in terms of saying that it's a good idea, I really support it. And I really hope that the planning commission takes to heart that this is, these are people who are very well-established in our community. They know what they're doing in terms of running a business. And I think it's just, I think it's time to try something new in Carmel, and this is a great, a great proposal. I think it's going to do very, very well in Carmel, and I think locals are going to end up using it as much, if not more than the tourists. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, do we have any more, any other, I see another, I don't see any other hands up. Okay, I'll give the applicant another three minutes to rebut. Would the applicant like to take advantage of the three minutes?
I would, yes. We have a lot of people in the community because Carol and Alan Richmond have been pillars of the community, and everyone knows Carol and Alan, many, many businesses, including, you know, Jack and Don Galant. We've got Anton and Michelle's owner, we've got the Mission Bistro, we went to the Mole Hole, we went to all the businesses that are around here. And, you know, we're conscious of the commercially zoned area. The hotels that are doggy-friendly are 100% on board with us, and the ones that don't accept dogs, I would like to invite them to come, see our proof of concept, and maybe we can partner with them. We are here to support you and support the community, and we have a tremendous amount of letters to say that we are going to do a good job. But we're going to invest money for a three-month period to do a proof of concept that we have to prove, or we're going to be out all the money. So we are going to do our due diligence to make sure that this is successful. And we invite the neighbors to come over to see how we've done sound level monitoring. We have experts doing this. I can hook you up to the cameras. I can show you the daily roommonitor.com, where you can see the decibel ratings. And we just didn't decide that we're going to do this. This was very well thought out. We went to doggy experts and doggy daycares and kennels. We did the sound level metering through an organization here in town that does it for bars and hospitals and childcare and schools. We use those face level monitors, and we handed it over to our sound absorption specialist, who does hundreds of doggy daycares in the country. This isn't about us figuring out, oh, I think we need to have a few acoustics. This is about doing it right. And if it's going to be successful, we have to, we have to be sensitive to everyone's opinion, and we have to spend the money, and we have to do it right. But devaluing the property, I'm a little concerned because we're in a commercially zoned area, and I do wonder if our property might be devalued as well if we can't put something in here that is acceptable to our neighbors. What is acceptable when our business model due to COVID has changed? Because those businesses aren't here. So I would like to be able to bring that up. I'd like to be able to refute that and say that so far with the realtors that we've been around, we're wondering where that information is coming from, and we just don't believe it's true. You are in a commercially residential zoned area. We have two apartments behind us. We have hotels that are near us. We've actually had hotel guests come to our establishment looking for their hotel room. We get along with our neighbors. We're going to do this well. We're going to respect you, and we're going to try to serve our community. And we're going to have a really premier facility that's going to be put on the map. People are going to know about it, and they're going to come to Carmel, and they're going to know about Lola's.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments from the public? I don't see any other comments. I see the bells, the bells still have their hand up. Did you, did the bells have something further to say?
Mr. Chair, I think that was just a reaction, like a clapping reaction. It looks very similar to a hand being up.
Oh, it's a clap, all right. Can't tell the difference. All right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public comments, open it up to the commissioners for their comments. I can see, I can see everybody now. Okay, Commissioner Locke, how about, would you like to begin?
How did I know I would be first?
I, I saw your smiling face first, so that, that was the only criteria. You can pass.
Thank you. Yes, I do recognize that COVID and coronavirus has played a huge impact on the ability of our commercial businesses to be able to find tenants and lease spaces. It's a huge challenge. We've lost many, many businesses in Carmel. So I certainly sympathize with your situation. I think that the concept of doggy daycare is definitely a needed service, but I don't believe it's appropriate in the building that we're talking about today. And I think it would be appropriate in a more remote or a larger property location, a ranch or somewhere like that, or somewhere that had, that had more space. Yes, I heard the comment about zoning. You are in a commercial residential transition district, but that doesn't mean you can operate any kind of business in that space. It has, and this went to our last discussion, last meeting's discussion, which is it's a transition zone. So you're transitioning between the commercial and the residential area, and that type of use needs to be compatible with the residential uses. And you've got a hotel right behind the building. You've got neighbors in a residential house that have five generations to the north. You've got residences across the street that have written their concerns. You've got business owners across the street that have also written concerns. There's kind of the trough that goes down into Mission Street. I have walked that way many, many times, and I'm very familiar with that area. I definitely sympathize with the residential neighbors. Again, I think it's a great concept. I just don't think this is the right place. When it comes to barking, I think that even though you have a no barking policy, it's kind of like good luck with that. And I believe even your representatives said you can't stop a dog from barking. There was also comments made about the noise, 15 minutes continuous before that would be an issue. I completely disagree with that. I think a dog is not going to bark for 15 minutes continuously unless it's got some serious problem. But you're going to have dogs barking. And the other comment had something to do with, they don't bark unless there's an issue. Well, every single time a dog walks into a business that that dog doesn't know, there's an issue. Maybe you're lucky and you have a dog that doesn't bark, but I know, I'm a dog owner. My dog is unpredictable. And I know that, that if somebody came in and was looking the wrong way, that she'd bark. I think the number of dogs proposed is extremely high. The city made recommendations for 100 per square foot. My calculation on that would put you at only 18 to 19 dogs between your play, playroom and the quiet room. I don't think the training room or quote, party room would be considered an area that would count toward the number of dogs that you could have in that space. Yes, I agree that locals probably would use it more, and I am one of those people that have used other services locally because I work full-time and have had need of daycare. But I think that the fact that locals might have use of this space, you're basically, you're not catering to the visitors, which is what, one of the things that you made a point of was that you'd help with the visitors. And I, I kind of think that anybody who comes to Carmel with their dog should be planning ahead to how they're going to deal with the dog when they go out to dinner or go to Sunset Center. I also have a real problem with the concept of the drop-offs. And yes, I know there's a parking lot at Sunset Center, but I also watched the kids get picked up from dance lessons. And they would double park many times. And the children were old enough to be able to come out to the street and, and, you know, mom would call them on the cell phone and have them come out to the street, and they'd get picked up. Dogs aren't like that. Are you going to have double parking all the time because somebody doesn't want to park at Sunset Center, so they're going to double park their car and turn, turn their hazard lights on and go pick up their dogs? You know, that's, that's one thing. The other thing is I'm concerned about the hours. The, you know, you're looking at seven days a week. You're, you're potentially interrupting from 8 o'clock in the morning until 8 to 9 o'clock at night. What if the dog isn't picked up? How, how is that dealt with? Sunset Center's programs can go longer than 9 o'clock. And now you've got people who are at the theater, and they've forgotten that they have to go pick up a dog. And I think, you know, that, that, that really is where I'm coming from, is I think that this is an appropriate thing. It's something we, we would like to see around here, but it's not the right location. And I'm really sorry that COVID and coronavirus has had such an impact on the ability to find appropriate tenants for this type of a building.
Chair, you're muted. Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Lehman, would you like to make your comments? Commissioner Lehman, you're muted.
I think Commissioner Locke has said a lot of what I've been thinking and writing, and I've got a couple of pages of comments on this in front of me. I want to qualify first that I have a lot of admiration for Carol Richmond and for her late husband. I think they did wonderful things for dance on the peninsula and for children here. Both my daughter and my granddaughter benefited from Carmel Valley School and then Kappa. So I, you know, I, I like that, that tradition that Carol was able to keep going for so many years. And I am so sorry for anyone whose business has suffered in, in this horrible time that we're in right now. I know we talk about being a dog-friendly town, and we certainly are. I know the realtors love it. The first thing they say when someone used to walk into their offices was, you know, you can let your dogs run free on the beach, which is good and bad, because we used to have all these wonderful sandpipers on the beach, and they're not there anymore because they're scared of the dogs. But aside from that, someone can correct me if I'm, if I'm not right, but for years, I thought we restricted the amount of dogs to a residence was three. Now, there may be people that have more dogs than that, but I think that used to be one of our laws in town. And now, when we talk about bringing this huge amount of dogs in next to residences, across from residences, next to hotels, I, you know, I think it's great, we love the dogs, but we've got to love our humans better. And I think it's really important that we, that, I mean, for myself, this is my opinion, that we think in these terms, that our residents take precedence. We love our visitors, too. We love the tourists. We like the people that come and love Carmel. But I think when they come here and they bring their dogs, and they need to have some other option other than trying to board them right in Carmel next to people's homes. So I, I think this is a great, a great idea. I think it's well-presented. I think it's well-thought-out, but I think it's the wrong place, as Commissioner Locke said. I'd love to see this out on someone's acreage in Carmel Valley. I, you know, I think the dogs would be happier if they could run around outside, cooping up anyone all day long in a room that starts to get pretty smelly. I, you know, I think that the sanitation is terrifying, that these animals would be confined inside all day long, whether they're there for an hour, or four hours, or eight hours, or 10 hours. It's, it's really going to be a, a rough place to keep sanitized. I, I feel sorry for the dogs being cooped up all day, that they won't have a place to run. And I, I wish there was a place that had a few acres that, where this, where you could take this great take this great idea for a business and take it out there. I, I see the Bell's house next door, I see the two apartments across the street, I see the hotels behind, the hotels, the Inns on the Street, the offices, people need to work if they're renting office space, they don't want to be disturbed by dogs barking. I think they're, they're just, it's too close, there are just too many, too many negatives to, for me to ever contemplate approving this. I read the letter about the person from Sunset Center who, who said it was so wonderful that people could just drop their dogs off and then go to a program at Sunset Center. Well, you know, these dogs are supposed to be picked up by nine, and I've never gotten out of a symphony or a concert at Sunset Center before 10:00 PM, so I don't know what, what happens at that point. I'm, I'm sorry to be so negative, and, but I just can't see that this is appropriate for this area.
Thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Commissioner Bolton?
Yes, thank you. I don't think I need to repeat what my fellow commissioners said, they said it very well. This is unfortunately not the right place or the right building for this use, in my opinion. I don't really have anything to add, it's already been said. I do sympathize, of course, with the loss of the business, but I can't support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Yeah, I think this is a great business model, I just don't think it's the right place for it. It's, you know, the, you know, the residential service district is a transition area, it has to support the residents, and I, you know, I, I really think we'd be doing the applicant a disservice, because if we approve this, they would spend a lot of money to try to get this building soundproofed, and I really think you're going to fail in three months, I really do. I mean, I routinely take my dogs over to the Casa de Amigos in Monterey, and the barking is loud and incessant, you know, and I just think that that's the nature of dogs, they bark, and you get a lot of dogs together, they bark for a lot of different reasons, and you're, it's going to be very challenging to not have impacts on the neighbors, so I can't support this. You know, one of the primary things that we do at the planning commission is deal with the impacts of proposed projects, and this project just is going to have too many impacts in this location. And I'm very sympathetic to what's happened to your ability to lease this building during COVID, and also that the other business wasn't able to continue there, I think I really am sympathetic to that, but, but this just is not the appropriate place for this. So, having said that, let's take a look at the resolution. Get that up here, excuse me, just taking a minute.
Mr. Chair, while you're looking at the resolution, just to offer some potential suggestions here, since staff brought a resolution forward.
Yeah, this is, this is a resolution for approval, and I don't hear any commissioners supporting approval, so.
Yeah, if the commission, if the commission moves and they want to deny the project, you know, the commission can just give staff the findings, I think we've been taking good notes, you know, based on the noise, you know, the character of the neighborhood, proximity to residences, we can make those findings on your behalf and craft a resolution out of that. I don't think we need to come back to the planning commission with a resolution unless the commission wants it, of course, but I feel like we are capable, based on the comments from the commission, if you so chose to deny the project, and we can just finalize that resolution based on those comments and not have to come back at the later hearing for that denial.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so with the, so at this point, all we need is a motion to deny the resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll move denial of application, and, oh shoot, sorry, I just closed out my thing here.
Commissioner Locke, while you're looking at, if there's any specific points you would like to have in the resolution other than what I just mentioned, please feel free to let, let us know about those, and we'll make sure they make it in.
I'm sorry, I'm not finding, all right, well, I'll just move denial of the request for UP 21-105, the Carmel Academy of Pampered Animals, and direct staff to prepare a resolution of denial based on the comments made by the commissioners during the public hearing.
Do we have a motion for denial?
I second that.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to deny the applicant, application for the use permit. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Delves, I think he's left the meeting. Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LuPage?
Yes. I am sorry, I think we're all sympathetic to you, and unfortunately, it's just, it's just not the right place. Okay, thank you. That concludes the public hearings tonight on our agenda, and we, the next item on the agenda is the director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I will be very brief. Just quickly to let everyone know, we will be making an announcement by this Friday on a selection of a building official for the City of Carmel by the Sea, so we've done interviews, we're very excited to make that announcement by the end of this week. I'd love to tell you right now, but it's not official yet, so you'll just have to wait a couple of days. We are also working right now on an opening plan sometime in the next two to three weeks on appointment basis for the public. That does not mean we're returning to public hearings yet at this point, it would just be for business at our counter here in community planning and buildings. I also want to update the commission, we have launched, as of about a week ago, we launched a public survey on the future of outdoor seating in the, in the public right-of-way. This would be permanent, constructed, not calling them parklets, think about like City of Monterey where they have, you know, Montreal Bistro, those kind of places where it's constructed, it's a, it's a permanent future thing. We launched a public survey on that just to get the appetite for the public and businesses and folks who visit Carmel. That survey is going through the end of May, it's available on the city's homepage, there's a big block right there at the top of the homepage that says, "Take Our Survey." Happy to say we're already up to 1,200 responses in about a week, which is fabulous, and nearly 60% of those are residents. So that's really great turnout for that. Once we get the survey results, we'll be going back to our ad hoc committee on outdoor seating to discuss those results, and ultimately going to the city council for direction if they want staff to pursue that any further. The last thing I have is just to commend and congratulate the commission on such a great job today. Again, we got through eight projects, I know it's almost 9 o'clock again, but eight projects is a lot of good work, and I really do appreciate all the time from the commissioners and these longer agendas, I think it's really, really great, and we'll continue to refine and try to make them speedier as we go along. I apologize for adding about an hour today because of my standard condition number eight, which I said I wouldn't mention again, but I did one last time. But thank you all very much, I think the commission should be commended on another great agenda tonight, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I have one question, Brandon, not to make this any longer than necessary, but are we actively looking for someone to replace Catherine?
We are. Do you want to come be a planner here, Commissioner Lehman?
Have you done that?
I'm actually, I'm actually very excited to report that as of last Friday, we have an advertisement live on our website, on the American Planning Association website, and a few other places as well. So our HR team got it turned around very quickly, I'm very happy about that. It's a three-week recruitment, once the recruitment's done, we'll begin the screening and interview process, so I'm hopeful within a couple of months we'll have a replacement. It's going to be very hard to replace Catherine, she's wonderful, but we are working hard to, to get that done as quickly as we can.
Yeah. She, she, I had the opportunity to speak to her when we were on the tour today, and told her how, how much she will be missed, but it was wonderful over these last few years to see how she grew with, with the job, and she really did a lot for all of us, I think, so she will be missed.
Okay, I guess that concludes our meeting tonight, I want to thank all of you, you, as usual, did a great job in your comments, so we'll see you all next meeting, and we are adjourned. Good night.
No, stop.